Hello, welcome everybody. This is a special meeting of the representative town meeting of the town of Darien. And we have a variety of things going on tonight, mostly having to do with the town budget. So to start off, we'll take a roll call so we know who's here and that helps us later on here when we're trying to figure out the votes. So without further ado, I will call on Kate Bush to do the roll call.
Okay, I'm going to call out the names of people that I've checked, I've seen come in. It will be alphabetical by your first name. So after I'm done, if I didn't call your name, if you would raise your hand. Adele Coniff, Amy Barsanti, Amy Chickles, Andrew Millar, Ann Reed, Barry Baldwin, Brad Patelli, Brian Ray Hill, Carolyn McGooey, Carolyn Bain, Cassian McSiri, Cecil Wade, Cheryl Russell, Clara Sartori, Colin Kelly, David Bain, Derek Lublin, Diane Conalog, Edgar Hawkins, Edward Wasekka, Elizabeth Lane, Elizabeth Bacon, Emily McDermott, Eric Golis, Frank Kemp, Bill Smith, Harry McLaughlin, Molly Giordano, Iris Mix, James Patrick, Jim Cameron, James Howe, Jack Davis, Jan Raymond, Janik Rogan, Jennifer Woodbury, Jennifer Muller, Jennifer Schwartz, Joan Davis, Joe Machelli, Jay Hardison, Cara Bonzak, Karen McNichol, Laura Mosher, Lisa Yornell, Lois Schneider, Lucy Fiori, Luisa Brackman, Marcy Minnick, Mia Handler, Mark Adletta, Martha Banks, Martha Luce, Michael Heights, Michael Cosolo, Mike Wheeler, Monica McNally, Olive Hauser, Patty Baumgartner, Patrick Kane, Peter Arfanos, Peter Marusick, Richard Polley, Robert Lyons, Rolf Oben, Sandra Savage, Sarah Baldwin, Sarah Haverstick, Scott Zimmerman, Seth Morton, Shannon Silsby, Stacy Ta, Sue Ellen Mitchell, Susan Laritzen, Suzanne Handler, Terri Duffy, Teresa Vogt, Thomas Moore, Vincent Arganbois, Bernard Del Mitter, and William Van Loon. So I see hands, so that says I missed people.
Sarah Parent.
Thank you. Catherine Bailey. Okay. Please don't lower your hands until I... Frank Edelman. Got you. John Bolton. Kenneth Feigerson. Penelope Wilson, Rob Werner, Sarah Parent. William Cusack. Okay, it's like we've got... All right, Seth?
Yes.
Back to you.
Um, now, guests, do you have... Yes, there should be two people.
I have Don Anderson and Data Canoff both here.
Ah, I can breathe again. There we go. Terrific. So, um... We have a quorum, Kate?
Yes, most definitely.
We call the meeting to order. Again, it's the representative town meeting, special meeting, and the first thing is to accept the agenda, and I'm going to ask you to accept it with one change. We want to move 2020 to the top. It relates to 2019, and the rest, all of the other stuff is for the budget. So we thought we'd just take 2020 first there. So without objection, I'd ask you to accept the agenda with the exception of moving 2020 to the top. So we would start with 2020. Everybody okay with that?
Um, I do see a hand raised. Give me a moment. Bert von Stupelnagel.
Okay.
I think, Bert, are you telling us that you're here? Bert, are you objecting to changing the order, or are you just saying you're here?
I'm here.
Thank you. Cheryl Russell has... Cheryl, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'd like to separate the selectmen's budget and the education budget out from being one vote. Should I do that now, or should I wait till we get into this?
They are separate votes.
They are.
Well, they're under 2015.
Well...
You vote on them separately.
They are. It's okay, Cheryl. It is separate.
Okay, thank you.
Muted.
Seth, hang on a second. Sorry about that, Seth. I accidentally muted you for a minute. You're good.
Oh, okay, so...
Unmuted.
Is the agenda okay? With the change? Okay, it looks okay, doesn't it, Kate?
Yes.
Wonderful. Next is, we want to do the approval of the minutes. And so if I could ask your unanimous consent for that, we would go ahead and approve the minutes, and then if you did have some comments, just... I don't, no one sent me any, but if you have some, just go ahead and give them to Karen. So are we okay?
One moment.
Okay. I'm asking carefully each time here.
There was a hand raised, but it's gone.
Okay. The only other procedural issue or thing that I wanted to ask you for was to have unanimous consent to allow us to follow the same procedure that we did last time in counting the votes and the abstentions, assuming that everybody else voted yes. We know who's here. We have, we've taken a roll call. We know every person who's here, and it avoids us having to roll call every time we have one of these items to be voted on. Is that acceptable, everybody?
I have a hand raised.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find it. Um, it's gone again.
So it looks like that's okay.
Wait, one moment, one moment.
Excuse me?
Christine Castles, you have your hand raised?
Yes, hi, this is Christine Castles. I don't know, I, my audio wasn't working during the roll call. Did you get me because I was registered and logged on?
I did not get you, thank you. Okay, Seth.
We look okay then, Kate?
Yep.
All right, that's wonderful, everybody, because it'll help us move along. Next item is announcements, and just, we have two guests with us tonight to give us some updates. Our chief police, Don Anderson, and David Canoff will talk to us on the COVID virus. Prior to doing that, I just wanted to, one quick, I am or administrative. We have an old meeting scheduled for June 15, a meeting of the RTM that's left over from our original schedule. Well, I'll cancel that. We don't have a, an agenda for that, or time to warn it really, or do anything with it. And if we need another meeting, we can do a special meeting and set that up. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then without further ado, I'll introduce Chief Don Anderson, and just give us an update on where we are now in the town from his standpoint.
Before Don begins, just wanted to tell Lisa Turhune I do have you present. So, Don, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Give me a smile or a wave, somebody. Okay, I guess a laugh is good. Well, good evening. It's always a pleasure to speak to the RTM and any town body about the workings of the police department. I'll be fairly brief for you, for your announcements tonight. As everyone knows, COVID-19 has been ongoing for the last three months or so, but the state of the department remains very strong. We're doing well with that. As everyone knows, we've had two protests now over the last two Sundays. Last Sunday, a week ago, we had perhaps 400 people in protest of current events that are happening in the country. Yesterday, probably between 600 and 700 protests that we kept safe from Trader Joe's down to the police department and back again. Just wanted to let everyone know that both of these events were peaceable. They were very vocal, very passionate, but certainly respectful. The police department received many comments of appreciation from the organizers and the attendees from the service that we rendered to them. Now, just, I want to tell the, you know, the RTM, the police department has and always will be a professional police agency. It's been that case since I've been there. What you see around the country doesn't happen in Connecticut all that often, and there's a reason for it. The training we get in the state of Connecticut is among the very best in the nation. If you are trained here in Connecticut, you can pretty much pack up your tent and go anywhere in the union and get, make a job as a law enforcement officer if you are a officer in good standing here in Connecticut. So beyond the training that the police department gets, we are also in an accredited police agency through Post-C here in Connecticut at the tier-two level. And what that is, that, that's making sure you're hitting all the boxes on best practices in law enforcement. That's liability avoidance, that's risk management. But above all, it's well-vetted professional public safety service by highly skilled and engaged officers. So I am proud of the officers in our police department. They get it. Do we always get it right? No, we don't. But when we don't get it right, we make it right, and we own it, and we move on. Let me be clear on one point. And there's a lot of dialogue and narrative in the national and regional news. The Darien Police Department does not racially profile. We do not engage or condone any type of police brutality in any manner, shape, or fashion. I got a lot of questions this week, email, and I'm happy to answer them from everybody. We review every use-of-force incident at the administrative level, and that report then gets submitted to the state portal for use-of-force review. The Darien Police Department uses force very judiciously and very infrequently. We also, you know, we report displays of force where force is not even used. We go one step further, where if a taser is taken out or a firearm is taken out and not used, we report that, and I think that shows how judicious our use of force is. I don't believe we have had to resort to a firearm in, I think, my whole career, and I've been, been there almost 37 years. So again, that speaks volumes to the training of our officers. All of this does not happen by accident. We have high-quality training from subject matter experts in the field of public safety. We have proper supervision. We have a fully engaged administration who's, quite frankly, never been content with "good enough", and we are looking for the best training we can acquire as we move forward. We have comprehensive general orders. We have very, you know, firm and well-publicized rules, and we have good oversight by our police commission. I think the police department here in Darien is top-notch. I have always believed pound-to-pound that we can go up against any police agency. And I'm perfectly happy to have the conversation with anyone who wants to try to disprove that. You know where to find me. I don't hide. I don't shirk from conversation. I'm more than happy to have any conversation on any topic involving the police department with any member of town government or any resident. I think that's my update, that we're doing pretty well, all in all, and we're here if you need us.
Thank you very much. That's, Don, thank you for coming by and just giving us a briefing. We appreciate it. We appreciate you taking the time.
Absolutely.
Seth, we have a couple of raised hands. Would you like to take?
We're really not taking questions. This is just a briefing, and intended to be, it's not a Q and A. There may be opportunities in the future to do that. This doesn't preclude other things that the RTM does. There's just a chance to, given the recent activities going on in town, to just get a quick briefing from the chief.
Seth?
So, hello?
Hi, this is Cecil. You have one comment for the chief from my attendees, standing ovation to Darien PD.
Well, I think we could accept that, yes. Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you to Don. Um, let me move on then to COVID and where we are with that. And we thank David enough for being here tonight and giving us a little briefing on where we are with the COVID.
Well, thank you for the invitation. Again, I'll also ask for verification that you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Okay, great, thank you. So the very first notification of any kind of potential issue with COVID was a phone call that I received back in February, Sunday, February 9, on a person who was returning from China. And that began our, our, our work in the COVID situation. We had a couple of patients, not patients, people that returned positive. But our work in COVID began in February. The first positive case of COVID was in March, and since then, there have been over 200 positive reports. And as the town reopens for business and we try to achieve some measure of normalcy, illness trends are used to aid in the decision-making process. That's what public health is all about, is about monitoring and tracking illness to make decisions. The Health Department has, on its website, is producing weekly reports, tracking of cases of COVID. And if anybody had a chance to take a look at the website recently, you can see that the cases, positive cases in Darien have declined tremendously. I'm pleased to say that our last positive report was on May 29. And since May 15, there have been only four cases, four positive, and two were found in an assisted-living facility in the town when all the residents of that facility were tested. And some more good news on the COVID front. Our medical advisor for the town informed the department that he hasn't treated a single COVID patient for a month in his private practice. You know, based on this data and similar trends reported in surrounding communities, it seems clear that community transmission has severely significantly reduced, and the risk of coronavirus illness is significantly lower than it was just a month ago. Through this time, we've worked closely with the Selectmen's Office in trying to provide information to not just Selectmen, but also the Parks and Rec Department, Superintendent of Schools, and every agency within town, to say nothing of the various businesses that have been affected by the governor's closures and now the reopening. So we're very much involved with overseeing the reopening of our restaurants, of our hair salons, and soon-to-be pools and gyms, and, and frankly, a lot of facilities that we never in the past had regulated. But we're getting calls from people wanting to know what they need to do to be ready, and we're doing our best to provide that information to them. We were one of the first communities in Connecticut to stand up a drive-through test location. So, you know, I'm pleased that we were able to get that going. It's still functional. Not, it's not at as much demand for testing these days as there was back in March and early April, but our provider has assured us that that facility will remain open for the foreseeable future. I spoke with him today. We've been providing the addresses of all positive cases to our first responders all along so that they could be best prepared if they're entering into a property where there might be a potential positive case. And a couple other notes from our nurses that I'd like to say is, is that we've had, I think it was 16, 16 hospitalizations total in Darien, and of the 16, there are, here... Four that are still, four cases remain hospitalized, two of which were from that assisted-living facility, and they were relatively recently discovered in May. So most people have recovered. Our fatality rate relative to our population was extremely low. I think that we've, at least this, at this point, I think we can say that we've weathered the storm, at least so far. And we do need to maintain our social distancing practices and masking. And I think that those have been largely contributing factors to our ability to do as well as I think we have, considering how close we were to both our neighboring cities have very high case counts for the coronavirus illness. So anyway, that's a encapsulized summary of where I believe we are, and we'll see where we're going as we reopen Connecticut and Darien.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Appreciate you taking the time, and very, very interesting. Thank you so much.
It's, it's been, it's been a challenge, and I want to thank, again, you know, Jamie and Kate, because they did enable us to add another nurse to help do our investigations and follow-ups because we followed up with every positive case to ensure that they had the ability to isolate themselves from others and get some history for what happened within the family. So we know illness was a lot bigger than what was reported in terms of laboratory testing. Many families had multiple family members who were ill that didn't get tested. So it was in large, you were able to get a good understanding of what's happened in the community by the investigative work of our part-time nurses. Thank you.
Thank you, David, very much. Um, so now we'll start in with the, the budget. And first, before we do that, we'll go to 2020, which we moved to the top. Consideration and action on appropriation of $216,756 to be used to capitalize the first interest payment of the Oxford School project. And on behalf of finance and budget, Jack Davis.
Give me a minute.
Jack, you need to unmute yourself.
There you go.
I'm Jack Davis, District 3 Chairman of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I move resolution 2020 hereby approving the special appropriation of $216,756 to be used to capitalize the first interest payment for the Oxford School project. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Thank you. If there's no objections, I propose to waive the reading of this resolution. This resolution was approved by the Board of Finance on May 14. The town issued $21 million of new bonds in April 2020. It received a premium of more than $4 million. A portion of that premium is being used to capitalize the first interest payment for the Oxford School project, and that amount is $216,756. The 2021 budget includes a revenue line item for the transfer from debt service fund to offset the amount of the first interest payment. As such, we needed to approve this resolution prior to addressing resolution 2015 on the budget as it's included in the revenue line. The remainder of the premium will be used to pay for issuance courts of approximately $110,000 and to reduce future borrowings for the Oxford School project. The F and B Committee met on June 4 with 16 of 17 members present and voted unanimously in favor of this resolution and recommends the same to the full RTM. Thanks.
Great. Any other committees? Anything from the floor?
You have Thomas Moore has his hand raised.
Tell me to slow down if I keep going, excuse me.
Right. I had Thomas Moore with a hand raised.
Yes, Tom.
Thought I unmuted him, but hang on. Sorry. Mr. Moore, if you want to speak, you need to unmute yourself.
He actually had a question for chief.
Okay. All right, we're good.
We're good?
I don't see any other hands.
Wait just a second. Yeah, you know, go it this way, Kate. It, it looks like you can just fly, and you have to remember there's a whole bunch of people out there.
Yeah.
Okay, good, all right. So it sounds like we're ready to vote. So we'll take those opposed, please.
I do not see any hands up.
Okay, abstentions?
I have Andrew Millar abstaining.
Great, looks like motion passes. We're on to the next one. So, um, next is the appropriation from Reserve Fund for capital non-recurring expenditures, $2,300,000. On behalf of finance and budget, Jack Davis.
Um, I want to give an overview of the overall budget. I'm Jack Davis, District 3 Chairman of the F and B Committee. On a typical budget night, I would have added at least 1,000 steps to my daily number coming to the podium. But this is not a typical budget night, and it was not a typical budget year. The budget season started out well for the town. It was typical. Earlier, we had approved early debt retirement in October. Our town grand list grew by approximately 1%. The debt refinancing was planned and executed in April, and budgets were presented, and although higher than the 3% Board of Finance guidance, were reasonably lean, and large chunks of the increases were explainable and essentially out of the control of our boards. And the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education continued their open dialogues with the RTM throughout their budget deliberations. The Board of Selectmen operating budget was $35 million, including the library, an increase of 1.237%. However, $680,000 of that increase was attributable to a change in the pension calculations as it appears municipal workers live longer than the average employee, and the pension projected earnings rate was lowered to 6%. Both good things to do to a pension. And without these pension costs, the Board of Selectmen operating budget would only have increased by 1.237%. have increased by 1.7%, well below guidance. And that also included at that the implementation of third shift, getting three FTEs on the civilian dispatch. The approved Board of Ed operating budget was $103 million, up 3.4% or $3.4 million. The main factors for the budget increase was a significant increase in the healthcare cost due to high pool costs associated with certain members in the pool. That equaled 3/4 of a million dollars. And the same pension cost noted above for approximately 340. These two accounted for 1/3 of the increase. The remaining increase was attributable to salaries net of approximately eight FTE reduction and a reduction in the excess cost reimbursement of over half a million dollars. And this was due to the aging out of qualifying students and other special ed course reductions. Capital requests in both budgets total 3.53 million dollars prior to bonding, up 10% from the prior years. From the original overall approved budget requests, the operating capital were up 3.7% with the Board of Selectmen, including both capital and operating, up 4.9 net of town revenue, and the Board of Ed up 3.1%. Again, it appeared both over guidance, but the town was in very good shape. The incremental income from the growth of the grand list approximated $1.6 million. The early retirement of debt and refinancing of other outstanding in April equaled $1.7 million. The allocation of the reserve fund for nonrecurring expenses contingency of $400,000 to a capital project, which was an allocation F and B had been discussing with the Board of Finance over the last two years, also reduced the budget. The use of Oxford premium to pay the first year interest of 216 did it, as well as just bonding the initial thought of $1.3 million of capital projects. And our initial collection rate was planned to move up to 99.44%. And our collections have been so good that the Board of Selectmen had actually reduced the interest costs associated with the late payments by 25,000. All of the above would have landed yielded a 16.51 mil rate, a four basis point increase by my calculations and an increase of only 1/4 of 1%. General fund balance was 23 million, about 15% of budget, and 5 million over the 12% credit agency target prior to the closing out of the current year's anticipated surpluses. I have to admit, things were looking good. And then and then and then something bigger than our town budget occurred. And then the world changed, the economy changed, our student lives changed, all of our lives changed, and some lives were lost. COVID-19 had arrived. Then we had changes. Some sought to have the RTM cede its budgetary authority. The Board of Finance developed a methodology for a new budget. F and B in its May 4th meeting voted unanimously against that methodology and offered a different way to achieve both the zero mil rate and zero expense rate goal, deferring capital, working on nonlapsing accounts while maintaining board approved operations intact, including civilian dispatch, and not requiring the additional 557 additional Board of Ed operating budget cut that occurred. The coordination between the Board of Finance and RTM was not as robust as in prior years during budget deliberations, although we had two groups, Hawk and Rec and Public Health and Safety, join the working groups of the Board of Finance and F and B. The Board of Finance then revised the budget. It lowered the estimated collection rates or great recession rate, reducing taxes to be collected and received next year by 700,000. It reduced anticipated town revenue by a net of 570,000. It deferred or cut capital projects. It deferred or cut the Board of Selectmen operating budget by 428,000, including the deferral of civilian dispatch, although this may come back in fiscal '21. And it cut the Board of Ed operating budget by $1 million. The final budget vote was moved from May to June by executive order. Now, this wasn't a typical budget year, but there's work to do tonight, and we, the RTM, will do our job and have a final budget ending this atypical year, just as every other RTM has done since the day the town charter was signed. There are seven parts to this budget of 2015. The approval of capital projects, the approval of the Board of Selectmen budget, including their operating expense, library grant, and transfers to capital and debt funds, the approval of the Board of Ed operating, the approval of total appropriations, which is a mathematical equation, approval of the mil rate, approval of 10 million in tax anticipation notes if required, and approval of transfers to other funds. F and B votes on each of these items separately. Four amendments were made during our June 4th meeting. Three will address capital. One is in the Board of Selectmen operating budget. Again, each will be addressed separately. Onto capital item A. I move section A of the RTM resolution 2015 appropriation in the reserve fund for capital nonrecurring expenditures. Do I have a second?
You have a second. I see Stacey TA.
If there's no objections, I propose to waive the reading of this resolution. All of the capital projects approved in this budget reside in this fund, the reserve fund for capital nonrecurring expenditures. The Board of Selectmen operating budget capital line is a mere transfer to this fund. That is why we need to address the approval of capital items prior to the next resolution. The capital projects are transferred to this fund, which is controlled by the Board of Finance. If a project is under budget, the unused amounts appropriated are transferred into the reserve fund for capital nonrecurring expenditures contingency accounts, which covers other projects which might be over initial estimates. Significant overages are brought back to the RTM for special appropriation. That is part of the initiative set up by the Selectmen and Jamie and Kate, and we saw it in the public works project, even though there were no overages in that account. There are five ways for the town to pay for capital projects. Which payment option is used is the purview of the Board of Finance, with one exception. And the options are, we can bond for capital projects, we can pay for capital projects from the general fund, we can pay for capital projects from the contingency account within the reserve fund for capital and nonrecurring expenditures, and this year, $400,000 is being allocated to one such project. Balances can be transferred from one capital project to another with Board of Finance approval, or at the end of the day, we tax for the capital projects within the current budget. For fiscal '21, the original approved capital requests were 5.3 million of 473,000 from fiscal year '20 or 9.7%. The Board of Selectmen represented 74% of the requested capital at 3.9 million, up 21%, and the Board of Education represented 26% of the requested capital at 1.4 million, down 211,000 or 13%. There are two areas that I want to discuss that F and B committee has been in conversations with the Board of Finance relative to this fund. They are the contingency reserve and what we are now calling nonlapsing accounts within the fund. As previously noted, projects are closed out to the contingency when they are completed or if a project has not been initiated within a certain timeframe. During fiscal year '20, F and B identified 167 in a capital project titled Board of Finance Public Works Infrastructure Reserve that had not been used for over seven years. In working with the town administrator and the director of finance, that amount was closed out to the Board of Finance contingency in February, bringing the balance to about 1.2 million. That's a large amount of funds that F and B and others believe should be returned to the taxpayers. In March, with F and B knowledge, the Board of Finance used some of that money for the police HVAC project as the project was time sensitive, had been approved in committee by the RTM Public Works, Public Health and Safety, and F and B. But as the RTM was unable to meet in March, it was decided to use these funds to move that forward. That left about 860,000 in the contingency. The Board of Finance has decided to move 400,000 to partially pay for the 950 requested to pay borrow notes in fiscal '21. F and B applauds this decision. Again, no RTM action is required as this contingency is fully under the control of the Board of Finance. F and B expects the Board of Finance contingency in this fund to be back up about 700,000 in fiscal year '21. We have asked the Board of Finance to create guidance for this account similar to the excellent guidance they established for the general fund funds. F and B had hoped to review the reserve fund in conjunction with the Board of Finance during this budget cycle. A review of the reserve fund for capital nonrecurring expenditures indicates there are other contingencies accrual and nonlapsing accounts in our town's capital fund. A small sample are, we approved for the revaluation. At the end of the revaluation, there was 127,000 left. This was not closed out to contingency and is being planned to use over the next three years. We believe that 67,000 should be returned to the taxpayers. There was another 60,000 in the Nuroton Heights conversion to natural gas paid by taxpayers about two years ago. This will be applied to the total project of this costing about 225,000, of which the remaining 165 will be bonded. A similar amount was in the Nuroton Heights fire department, initially at 80,000, now down to 32,000. This will not be initiated until fiscal year '22 the earliest, and believe those funds could be used for other capital projects. And when this project does come back for its conversion, we can bond for the full amount. There are reserve funds for town hall maintenance and town hall renovation totally about $212,000, which represents a three years of usage based upon the Board of Selectmen's six-year plan prior to the $100,000 additional accrual in this year's budget. In addition, there are several other town hall maintenance and renovation projects, including one that's being bonded for in resolution 2018 for $170,000. In fact, initially, we thought that was going to be used in the capital renovation account, but the Board of Finance instead decided to bond it, freeing up the money. There were also proper accruals for fire trucks, public works, equipment, and replacement of police vehicles, all based upon replacement schedules, which are reviewed by both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. This is a difficult year because rather than deciding just whether or not projects were good, a decision had to be made of whether or not that project was equal to or better than supplying funds to the operating expenses of both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Some of these questions we didn't agree with. During the course of this year, the Board of Finance determined changes to the requested capital as follows. It cut or deferred 524,000 of the Board of Ed requested capital projects, leaving a truck and four other projects associated with the safety and security of our children and our staff. It cut or deferred 596,000 from the Board of Selectmen requested capital projects, the largest of which was not funding the anticipated 500,000 accrual for future purchases of fire trucks. There is already 1.8 million in the account, and the Board of Selectmen had stated that the replacement schedule may be changing. It did choose to fund 400,000 on paving by using the reserve fund contingency for special appropriation. Total bonding between 2017 and 2018 results in 1.5 million dollars of capital, and the remaining 200, 2,291,845, offset by state grants, will be paid by taxes, including in this year's amount to be raised by taxes. Funding by taxes is down 1.4 million or 45% this year. The RTM committee met on June 4th and postponed proposed, rather, three individual amendments to the capital account. We will address these amendments at this time. It should be noted that the committee recognized the good work of the Board of Selectmen speaking with their department heads to identify $750,000 of potential Board of Selectmen requested capital deferrals. We were equally disappointed that in no time were the items not specifically given back by the Board of Selectmen discussed at any Board of Finance deliberations. Additional deferrals could have meant lower cuts to the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen operating budgets. I now will move the First Amendment to reduce the capital funding by 100,000 from the town hall capital maintenance account. Do I have a second?
Stacey TA, Beth Lane, both second.
My discussion. The reserve fund for capital nonrecurring assets has two town hall reserve accounts, town hall renovation reserve and town hall capital maintenance reserve. The combined balances of these accounts approximate 213,000 already. Currently, an additional 100,000 remains in the capital budget, which would bring that account to 313. F and B believes this is overfunding due to the following reasons. The six-year projected use of these funds is 75,000 per year, resulting in at least three years already in the account and over four years amount should it be funded. There is already money in the account for the Board of Selectmen use. The pressed amount did not have specific details in the budget book. The Board of Finance specifically stated that any COVID-19 capital or operating expenses should not be put in the budget. There were also other numerous town hall renovation projects listed separately in that account that was not taken from that overall renovation or maintenance account. It includes renovation to the second floor for 58,000, security improvements, carpet replacement, severe island scallopises, gymnasian upgrades, which we will be moving 75,000 in on a very good project, town hall replacement of concrete steps, lighting upgrades, and the $170,000 to upgrade town hall heating, which was originally slated to be taken out of this account, but the Board of Finance decided to bond. As such, it appeared that each town hall renovation or capital maintenance ends up being a standalone project. There's about 470,000 already, not counting 75,000 to be added for the gym floors, making all of the 213 funds really somewhat available for the 100,000 if needed. Therefore, F and B voted 15 in favor, no against, and one abstention to remove the 100,000 funding from this capital. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Other committees wishing to speak on the amendment?
I don't see any hands raised, Seth.
Okay, comments from the floor?
Not seeing any hands. Not seeing any hands.
Okay, sounds like we're ready to vote. Those opposed, please?
I have Jim Cameron. Olive Hauser. I just have the two noes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have a third no.
I'll take two or three more breaths here, just so I don't miss one here. And then abstentions?
One moment. Sheila Sherwood. Okay, that's it, just the one abstention.
So the motion passes. So, Jack, you have another amendment?
Wait, Diane, hang on, I've got Diane Conalog with the hand raised.
Okay. Diane?
Diane, you need to unmute yourself if you wanted to speak. Diane, go ahead.
No.
You were voting no on the...
I'm voting no on that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, how are we looking, Kate?
Hang on a second. Jim Cameron, you need to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Mr. Moderator, shouldn't we not request comments from town officials, such as the chairman of the Board of Finance? The question is directed to the moderator, Jack.
Thank you.
Yeah, certainly, they can raise their hand if they have a comment, that's...
Cheryl Russell. You're breaking up, Cheryl. I can't hear her. Diane, go ahead.
Is this me?
Yes.
Diane, okay. I just have a question. I've been on the RTM for 30-plus years, and I don't ever remember that the F and B committee proposed cuts after the Board of Finance has presented its budget. Is this a first?
You know, it's not, maybe a first, but it's not, it's within their rights.
It's also not a first. Six years ago, in the last year that Jim Palin was the chair of the F and B committee, a motion was made by Steve Anderson to cut a blanket amount of approximately $200,000 without being specific from the Board of Selectmen budget. There was significant conversation about whether or not one had to identify the specifics to be cut, but it is not the first time this has occurred.
Okay, I am a little bit concerned that your meeting took place, I believe, on June 4th, and today is June 8th, and cuts have been made that nobody maybe even knew about if they hadn't seen that until your emails came today at 6:29. So I just don't think this is the right way to do something.
I can appreciate that, that comment. However, with the exception of one item, all of these items have been presented to the Board of Finance in emails or discussions. They have been discussed at our other meetings. They were discussed in the, which call it, the joint meeting with the Board of Finance Budget Team. So they are not, they're not a surprise, and...
I have to beg your pardon, but I do believe that the park and rec part of this was not talked about in your prior message.
If it wasn't, it was in fact discussed in those meetings. So, but we're not at that, that motion at this time.
I realize that.
So we can discuss that when we get there.
I realize that, but I'd be saying the exact same thing over again, and I really don't want to waste people's time, but I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Seth.
You have Monica McNally.
Monica?
Hi, Jack.
Hi.
I looked over the meeting where your questions were presented to the Board of Finance, and I don't remember this being covered. Was it covered at a different time?
This was, this was covered in the, in one or two emails that were sent. It was also discussed at length at the Board of Selectmen, if I'm not mistaken. The change on this occurred basically because initially we walked away believing that $170,000 was going to be used as the 213,000. The Board of Finance then decided, instead of using it out of this fund and paying for it, that they, which call it, that they were going to bond it. However, it's been consistently that we were talking about some of these accounts going forward. So there is, there's a question about the whole concept of nonlapsing accounts, and it's part of what we wanted to do in this budget cycle, unfortunately, working with the Board of Finance. And unfortunately, due to COVID, we were unable to do it. But, you know, this, we take great pride in doing this, and in fact, you know, members of my committee will tell you, we've been raising this for more than one year. And so, you know, it's been raised in prior years. It's been raised in committee in prior years. It's been raised to the Board of Finance in prior years.
Okay.
Others?
One second.
Thank you, Monica.
Peter Orfanos?
Yes, this is Peter Orfanos. I just wanted to emphasize that some of these items, which are going to be discussed this evening, were on lists that were, were lists of potential budget cuts that were discussed at Board of Selectmen meetings, and also at Board of Finance meetings, some that weren't discussed at Board of Finance meetings. So I think that this, these items have been in the, in the public discussion for some time. And also, I'd like just to add that one of the things that the Finance and Budget Committee did do was to come up with a plan which would have addressed additional, additional areas for budget savings that would have prevented or made unnecessary some of the cuts which were made by the Board of Finance and which we're all going to be voting on tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Comment?
That's it.
Sorry, can I move to the next motion?
How we, how we doing, Kate? How we doing?
You're fine. His motion passed.
Okay, great. So...
Okay, I have another motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to...
Another amendment, Jack Davis.
I move to reduce 46,000 cost of the fence around the training facility listed in the Fire Commission capital request. Do I have a second?
I see multiple seconds.
This amount is to fix a fence surrounding the tower within the Public Works Transfer Station. While several F and B members question the need, we believe there are funds available for this project already in the Reserve Fund for Capital Nonrecurring Assets. Approximately 32,000 is in the Nuroton Heights Fire Department conversion to natural gas, which is not scheduled to be implemented until fiscal 2022 or beyond. Whilst it would be a new approach, because typically, once funds are allocated to a department, they not pulled out to be shared by the, by all the people that use that training facility, it is a good use of the $32,000 plus additional funds to be used out of the contingency account that's there to still have this fence go forward. We just did not believe that taxing another $46,000 when funds were available to be used should be used. The Board of Finance is bonding the Nuroton Fire Department to natural gas, so moving these $32,000 over would not affect, and in fact, would improve for what we're going to be bonding when that project does come through. This is another area where F and B felt funds were already within the reserve fund that could be used to pay for this project. The committee did vote 14 in favor, one against. The one against was that although within the transfer station, the fence is 35 years old and probably should have been repaired 10 years ago. I will also state, this one was not discussed with the Board of Finance previously, but again, while we don't disagree that it could be repaired, it was the source of funding that we object to, saying that the funds are already within these best capital fund to take care of this.
Any other committees?
You have... You have John Zagotsky, and we are now waiting to comment.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, this is John Zagotsky. I'm chairman of the Board of Finance. Just a quick comment. With regard to all of these reserve funds, as I've stated publicly, we plan to take a close look at those funds over the summer. The reason that we did not go after individual funds and try to pull funding out of them is that there are a lot of complexities as to why those funds exist. A lot of them are overseen by town department heads or specialized personnel that are involved with the funds themselves and the projects to which they pertain. And what I didn't want to do was to get into cleaning out those funds without close consultation with those town employees and town department heads, so that this could be done in a careful way. I was just worried that we didn't have enough information to make those decisions. And so what I urge you to do is to not disturb those funds right now. Let's do a careful process in the summer when we're not hurried, when we can collaborate together between the Board of Finance and the RTM, and work with Kate and other members of the administration and even the schools, to get to the exact right answer on all of these reserve accounts. That's it.
Thank you, John. Others?
Not seeing any other hands raised at the moment.
I'll wait a little bit, just in, yeah.
Okay, I've got John Bolton. Go ahead, John.
John?
Mr. Moderator, I find this disturbing, the way that the F and B committee is operating here. This, we have very unusual circumstances. You're going to find that TG SNA is going to pull the report that we're going to do later because we felt that this forum was not appropriate forum to have a detailed discussion about wording that we would if we could do it in person. I think the Board of Finance, I have enormous respect for them and John Zagotsky. I will be voting against this motion, and I would, I'm troubled by the way that F and B is approaching this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else?
Martha Banks. Go ahead.
Martha?
Martha, you need to unmute yourself. Martha? I can't hear her. I, Martha has her hand raised, but I don't hear her speaking.
Can you tell if her, her mic is on or...
Yeah, it's on, yeah. Okay, I...
Well, she might be, she could text you, I guess. I guess that's, I don't know whether that's copacetic as far as, you know, recording the session.
Yeah, okay. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to move on from that.
Okay. Any others?
I believe Cheryl Russell wanted to speak, and we find her. Cheryl?
Am I on?
You're on.
Okay, so Kate, you have to unmute this thing, right?
Cheryl, you're unmuted now.
Okay. Okay, so I wanted to make sure that I got my no vote in on the last $100,000, and I'm going to vote no on this $46,000 also. I do think that the Board of Finance has done a great job, and I think that F and B is stepping over bounds, shall I say, at this point, because I don't believe this has happened in many, many years that I have been on the RTM, to have F and B come in here at the 11th hour and come up with cuts to the capital. So I will be voting no on all their capital requests to remove money from the capital account. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Try Martha again.
Martha?
Martha, you need to unmute yourself.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Listen, I think the only reason to spend money on this project in this economic environment is if there is a real and imminent safety threat. And I listened to the meetings discussing this project, and I didn't hear that. I did not hear any discussion about the problems they've had with intruders in the past, and on this basis, I think deferral of this project is warranted, and it is not up to us to tell, you know, the Board of Finance where to get their funds. I just don't think in this environment, money should be funded for this project. I would defer it.
Thank you, Martha.
Peter Orfanos? You need to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to respond by saying that I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but there was a spreadsheet of capital expenses within the super, excuse me, the First Selectmen's Budget, which were all identified for capital, as potential capital deferment savings areas. And I can't, again, specific, I can't recall the specific comment that was made, but the majority of those items that were identified in that spreadsheet all indicated that these were things that I'm saying to paraphrase, I can't quote, because I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but to paraphrase, this can wait till next year. And then, and in fact, that was the guidance from the Board of Finance. Look for capital deferments first. Don't impact operating, operating budgets, don't impact talent services. So that's why these items were discussed, because they've been actually identified as being potential areas for savings, and in many instances, had comments, again, to paraphrase, this could wait till next year. So we were actually operating within the criteria set by the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
I see none.
All right, seems we're ready to vote. No votes, please?
Okay, you're gonna need to give me a minute or two.
Yeah, I was, we're gonna have somewhere, it might have been indifferent, but okay.
Yeah, okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. I count eleven noes.
Okay.
Would you like me to read the names? Actually, maybe, yeah, I'll read them for Karen to.
Because that way, if somebody missed it, or, you know, they'll know, yeah.
Okay, as no, I have Bert Von Stupelnagel, John Bolton, Marcy Minnick, Brian Rayhill, Diane Conalogue, Jim Cameron, Lucifiori, Monica McNally, Olive Hauser, Rob Warner, Vincent Argonbaugh. And I hope I pronounce it close to right.
Thank you.
Okay. Abstentions. Scott Zimmerman, Michael Cosolo, I'm sorry, that looks like a question. Sharewood, Sheila Sherwood, Vincent Argonbaugh, Virginia, Vincent can't be both. Virginia, Kamono. I have those as abstentions. Sarah Baldwin as an abstention.
All right.
Excuse me for a second, Kate. Do you have Linda Turhune as an abstention?
I do not have her as an abstention.
I have a, a note from her, she's an abstention.
Okay.
And I have a note from Michael Cosola, who is also.
I have him as, okay.
As a no.
As a no, okay.
Thank you. Cheryl Russell.
Cheryl Russell voted no, okay.
Yes, okay. And Linda Turhune got abst, okay, let me just see.
Yes, we're good. It's the, the motion.
I think we've, I think we've got all of the noes and abstentions.
The motion does carry.
Motion carries then. I recognize Jack Davis, because you have one more amendment.
Give me a second to get to him. Jack, you have to unmute yourself.
Done. Motion three, I move to reduce the following three items requested by the Park and Rec Department totaling seventy-two thousand. The riding leaf blower for eleven thousand, the relining of the Weed Beach tennis courts for thirty-six thousand, and twenty-five thousand purchase of equipment for the concession stand at Weed Beach. Do I have a second?
Yes, you have a second. I have.
Thank you.
Multiple seconds.
All three projects were identified as potential deferrals by the Board of Selectmen and Department head analysis of capital accounts. The F and B committee felt these three projects could be deferred to next year. The riding blower purchase did not show financial results by reduction of overtime with seasonal staff or listing of other activities to be completed due to the efficiency claim. The lining of the tennis courts did not present a safety hazard, and the courts are still usable. The concession stand had significant discussion in the early deliberations. Currently, the concession vendor at Weed Beach owns the equipment in the concession stand. This has resulted in only one bid for providing service. The topic, as I said, had lengthy conversation. The first selectman requested five thousand dollars of the original amount be allocated to hiring a consultant to determine what equipment should be purchased by the town, and that amount remains. The committee felt that upon completion of the consultant's analysis, the commission could come back to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and the RTM with specific recommendations regarding the town owning the equipment, including additional costs for insurance and operating costs. However, as that study has not been completed, we felt it premature to authorize the purchase of the equipment for twenty-five thousand. This goes back to two points. There were certain things in this time which probably can be deferred, and we are a little bit disappointed that the Board of Finance did not have a fuller conversation on these. Thirty-six thousand dollars is a significant amount, and saying that that's more important than some of the expense cuts to the Board of Selectmen or Board of Education budget, we just could not comprehend. Hence, we made this recommendation from the committee, and the committee voted unanimously in favor of this cut.
Thank you, Jack. Comments?
Michael Cosolo?
Michael?
No.
Okay, we're not ready for the vote yet.
No, I'm saying, all I'm saying is.
Just, just for comments on the amendment.
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm not seeing hands raised. Wait, wait, okay, hang on a second. Diane Conalogue, you need to unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted. I, because you asked me to come back at the appropriate time, I'm back. And what I want to say is, I think it is inappropriate that the Park and Rec Committee had not been able to meet again after the, the finance and budget meeting to discuss what they have planned. And I think Adele is having trouble getting on here. She's not being recognized. So Kate, I just wanna.
Right, she didn't.
Tell you that?
Yeah, I just sent her something that should help her.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. So again, I think it's inappropriate that, the timing of this whole thing, that getting this tonight at six-twenty-nine PM, it was the, our committee, our Park and Rec Committee could not meet. And I think Adele's gonna give a report. Is this when she gives the report? From our committee?
Not yet, yeah.
Yes?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so hopefully, she's gonna get on, because she does have her report.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you, Kate.
Clara Sartori? You need to unmute?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my vote was not recorded the last time. I was a no, so I did not hear my name called. The fence around the tower vote, I was a no to, okay. All right, but you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Um, okay, hang on a second. I had Jenny Schwartz.
Hi, it's Jenny Schwartz. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, Jenny Schwartz, District One, F and B. We actually, we held a meeting, Bob Lyons and I on F and B did hold a meeting with members from the Parks and Rec RTM Committee, and joint with two members from F and B, I'm sorry, from Board of Finance, and some other members on F and B who were talking with Public Health and Safety and Public Works. So we did bring up some of our concerns over, we, we did raise questions with them directly about our concerns about the proposed, there were about six capital items in the Parks and Rec budget, and we did raise concerns, and we, in our subsequent meeting with F and B, we did talk about it. And so the, these did not come up last minute. These have been in the works now, really since March. So I, if, if the information didn't get passed along, I, I think it was there, that of the six projects that were sort of on the, on the list to be reviewed, that we've been in discussion with those with members from the Board of Finance, as well as members from the RTM Parks and Rec Committee since, since March. So we just decided that we would let the F and B Committee take a look and see if these, these projects, were they, you know, in the category of were they nice to haves, or were they need to haves? And we felt that the ones that we decided to cut warranted defer for now, that now is not the time to tax for these. And that's what I have.
Okay. Adele? Adele, you need to unmute, go ahead.
Where, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
So you're.
I'm very sorry. I've not been recognized when I have voted at all, and so I will tell you my votes in a minute. I have a report from the Park and Rec Committee. Are we not doing reports tonight, Seth?
No, no, not, not a problem. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I think my report will address the comments, although I have to admit in my trying to get myself on here, I haven't really been listening carefully. Good evening. This is Adele Coniff, District Three, RTM Parks and Recreation Committee. The Darien Parks and Recreation Department maintains approximately two-hundred-and-ten acres of parkland, and in addition to sixteen-point-two acres at Highland Farm, the Meadows East Picnic Area located at Weed Beach on the old Short Lane property, Police Department grounds, the Hecker property, and the Diller property. They also maintain facilities at Weed Beach, Pear Tree Beach, Cherry Lawn, McGowan Park, Baker Park, as well as new trails at Diller and soon-to-be-finished Highland Farm. The department is also responsible for all organized programs and events open to the general public. Most activities are operated on a self-sustaining basis. Revenues are also generated by beach stickers, boat permits, paddle hut and picnic rentals, kayak storage, annual beach concession fee, park reservations and rentals, event and program venue, and adult and youth sport league fields, fees, excuse me. The department has always brought significant revenue to the town and will likely continue to do so even with the pandemic's effect. The Board of Finance approved the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Town of Darien Parks and Recreation operating budget as one, that one million, yeah, one million nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. This is an increase of four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars from two-thousand-nineteen, two-thousand-twenty. The operating budget is essentially flat. I will get to the capital in a minute. The RTM Parks and Recreation Committee first reviewed the Parks and Recreation Department's Town of Darien twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget requests in January. We were lucky to have Pam Gary, the Parks and Recreation Department Director, take us through the requests. Pam patiently answered our many questions, thoroughly reviewing the operating and capital budgets. The capital budget department requests for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one were in recurring capital, sixty thousand dollars in the work equipment reserve for a park and rec vehicle, and five thousand dollars for, in tree replacement. The nonrecurring capital was eleven thousand dollars of a valve replacement at Town Hall Fields, thirty thousand dollars for Weed Beach concession equipment, fifteen thousand dollars for an update, to update playground equipment, eight thousand dollars for a cherry lawn traffic study, ten thousand dollars to remove the cherry lawn basket ball court and seed it with grass, sixty-six thousand dollars to repaint Weed Beach tennis courts, and eleven thousand dollars for a stand-on mower. I'm gonna go back, back up to the list and go back to the thirty thousand dollars for the Weed Beach concession equipment that has been mentioned. Much of the equipment in the Weed Beach concession area is owned by the current vendor. This makes it impossible for us to have a competitive bidding process. The current vendor is in the last year of a three-year contract. This expenditure will replace the vendor's equipment with newer used, so the town will have a more, will have more than one bidder. Competition will likely increase revenue modestly, but most importantly, improve the concession product and service. I'm gonna go back up and speak about the, the repainting of the Weed Beach tennis courts. Proposed is power washing and repainting of the courts. It is recommended that this be done every five to six years. The courts were installed eight years ago. The tennis courts closest to the entrance of Weed Beach particularly need repainting. There's a fairly large area on the center of the court where the paint is gone. There appears to be degrading of the paint in general. Lastly, the eleven thousand dollars for the stand-on blower. The stand-on blower increases the efficiency of our staff with the additional properties the department is tasked to manage, example being Diller and Highland Farm. It blows leaves as well as light snow. The RTM Park and Rec Committee followed the budget process carefully, as the town administrator and Board of Selectmen made their adjustments. In February, this selectman approved the following changes to the non-capital and nonrecurring Park and Rec budget. The thirty thousand dollars for the Weed Beach concession equipment request was revised to include a five thousand dollars for a consultant to formulate a plan for what we need and what kind of service we want. The Park and Rec Commission has had many questions about snack bar operations and what is the right kind of service desired by the community. Eight thousand dollars, the cherry lawn traffic study was removed. The ten thousand dollar cherry lawn basketball court removal was changed to fifteen thousand dollars for the cherry lawn basketball half-court. Sixty thousand dollars repainted of the Weed Beach tennis courts was reduced to thirty-six thousand dollars. Repaint the Weed Beach tennis courts for the, only the ones that are near the park entrance. The remainder of the capital of requests were unchanged. The budget was presented to the Board of Finance. As we all know, the pandemic brought changes to our budget process. The Board of Finance reviewed the budget line by line as usual, plus asked the Board of Selectmen to review their portion of the budget again to suggest significant cuts of their budget to the Board of Finance. The Parks and Recreation budget was not reduced by either the Board of Selectmen's second review or by the Board of Finance. The RTM Parks and Recreation Committee met on May fourth, twenty-twenty, with ten of thirteen members present, constituting a quorum, to review again and vote on the Parks and Recreation portion of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Town of Darien budget. The committee had thoroughly reviewed the operating budget. In January, we voted unanimously in support of the operating budget. Our primary discussion in May focused, was on the capital budgets. Capital recurring budget of sixty-five thousand, not capital nonrecurring budget of a hundred-and-eighteen thousand. These capital requests deal primarily with fixing things that are worn out or broken, things that are safety issues, and measures that would increase productivity. While we differed in our discussion on which capital project was our priority and which one was least important, we voted unanimously in support of the recurring and nonrecurring capital budget requests. With our unanimous votes, we look to the full RTM for your support. I'd like to thank Pam Gary and Lori Bora for their help with this year's budget. Thank you to all the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and fellow RTM members. This year's budget process has been quite a challenge for us all. Now, Seth, would you like to remind me which part of this we are voting on?
This is the third amendment to the, this, the appropriation from reserve fund and capital nonrecurring expenditures.
And so this is for all of the cuts that F and B, go ahead.
Only your operating budget would come under the selectmen's operating budget, but it's, you know, this is fine, it's working fine.
Yes, I realize that. I just am a person who likes to not bore everybody and just give one speech. Thank you very much.
And gratefully appreciated.
Yes. Having said that, I certainly feel a bit targeted with my committee. I absolutely do feel like the Park and Rec budget has been targeted by the Board, by the, by F and B. I do not like the, the process that they have taken, and they keep talking about this list of, of cuts that were proposed, or possible cuts, that were, possible deferrals, let's put it that way, that, that, that the selectmen had asked for, and they got. And I, I have to repeat, the selectmen did not reduce the Park and Rec budget a second time, nor did the Board of Finance, nor do I think that the F and B should, should suggest that they should.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We had, Rob Warner has been waiting. Sorry, Rob Warner. Go ahead.
Rob, yep.
Rob Warner? You're self, you're muted. Go ahead.
I don't know why I was called on. Is my hand up?
Your hand, yeah. Okay. Jenny Schwartz? Nope, she's gone. Cheryl?
Am I on?
Yes, you're on.
Thank you. Yeah, Cheryl Russell, District Two, Park and Rec Committee. Adele, you did a great job. You got everything in there that the committee discussed and voted on. I agree 115% that I think F and B is overstepping their bounds on this. The Board of Selectmen went through this, the finance and, the finance and budget committee is, is out of line. I, I'm sorry to say that and be so strong, but it's, it's really not their call to come to an RTM meeting and go through a budget like this and, and pick out certain things. I watched their meeting of last week and they had misinformation in there on some things that they discussed. So I, I'm really upset about this. The, the capital budget was for $118,000. Park and Rec brings in over $400,000 into revenue. We're asking for $118,000. If you reduce it by the 72,000, that leaves us $46,000. Nothing. And when I was chairman, as many of you remember, I got up there every year and said, we didn't get sand. And Park and Rec's budget is a little tiny sliver, sliver of the pie. And to come back and tell us that we can't do the kitchen for 30,000, it, it really leaves us in a bind to find a good vendor to hopefully next year have a concession stand. We don't have one this year at either beach. And we're put in a, between a rock and a hard place. I, I think that, I'm hoping that my fellow RTM members will vote no, as I am voting no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, hang on. Stacey, Stacey T A. Unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hi. First of all, it absolutely is within the F and B's purview to, to do the research on, on the budget and put, put forth recommendations to the RTM to vote. That is absolutely our purview. Second, with the kitchen equipment, I have yet to see what kitchen items they want for there, what the costs are, what vendors they went to, how they, how they vetted it out. And again, I'm going to echo Martha that these three things we chose are not safety concerns, and that's really where we should be focused. So the leaf blower and the paint lines are not safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go alphabetically because that's the best I can do right now. John Bolton? John Bolton? You need to unmute yourself to talk.
Yes. I'd like to second what Mrs. Russell said. I've had many a battle with Mrs. Russell over the years, but on this one, I am 100% behind her. Please, I would urge everyone to vote no on this. Thank you.
Monica McNally?
I just want to confirm. I believe that the Board of Finance, what the proposal for the tennis courts was made to take that out, and they reinstated that. Am I, drive something wrong on that? Do you remember that, Adele?
Jan Charneski, can you answer that?
No, I don't believe that went to the Board of Finance. The Board of Selectmen had discussions because it was on the department's list of potential reductions to meet their target. But I don't believe it went to the Board of Fin, I don't believe it was discussed at Board of Finance.
It didn't go that far. Okay, thank you.
Sheila Sherwood? You need to unmute yourself to talk. Sheila Sherwood? Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that to me during the pandemic, when some people have less income, most people are afraid to travel for health reasons. Summer camps might not be operating. That this year would seem particularly important to maintain our public parks for everyone. So I just heard that the painting of the, in the tennis court should have been a few years, should have happened already. And I think it's a small thing to maintain something for the public. That's all.
Okay. John Zagrotzky? Go ahead, John.
Hello. So our, our philosophy behind trying to identify cuts from both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education was to actually reach out to them and ask them what would they do, right? What I didn't want to do was to have our board come in and make those cuts in, in a sort of uninformed way without taking into account what those boards would tell us. In the case of the Board of Selectmen, they came up with some pretty big cuts, and that was in the, the biggest one being that fire equipment reserve. That was a big change. And they went through and did some careful changes to their budget, and they contributed a great deal to our objective of trying to get to a flat tax levy budget. And so when we achieved that and then made the other cut to the Board of Education that you all will discuss, we achieved the overall goal of reaching a flat tax levy budget. And my recommendation is to, to simply accept that level of taxation as a reasonable compromise across the board. To go after these further items like repainting tennis courts, now a lot of this is around just simply maintaining the assets that we have in the town. And one of the things I've said publicly is, look, we want to try to reduce these budgets, but we don't want to compromise the assets we have in this town. I mean, we're not broke. And I think it's important for us to spend the money as the professionals that work for the Board of Selectmen have advised on maintaining those facilities. And that to sort of nickel and dime this and to get further cuts beyond what the Board of Selectmen have proposed, I think is unwise and unnecessary. And so I would urge you to, to set these types of small cuts aside and not make them. I'd remind you that it takes about $100,000 in cuts anyway to move the mill rate even a point. And so to do a lot of these small things, it simply adds to the great shabbiness in town and is unnecessary. And I think what we came up with the Board of Finance is sufficient in terms of the cuts we need for the town. That's all.
Carolina Magui?
Yes. So I hear what you're saying, John. But on the other hand, oh, Mr. Zagrotzky, on the other hand, I think this is a very tough budget here, and having to sacrifice purchases and things that the Board of Education is requesting to paint the tennis lines of the tennis courts is actually quite shocking to me. So I am completely opposed to not passing this.
Frank Edelman? Go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm just struck by the double standard here that the Board of Finance is asking for its hard work to be respected and to be passed as they are requesting. But at the same time, the hard work that the Board of Education did, and in particular Dr. Adley's administration, was completely run roughshod over by the Board of Finance when they made a peremptory budget reduction on their own of over $1 million. I sense a double standard at work. Thank you.
And Peter Orfanos?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. I, I wanted just to amplify a couple of the comments here. And I, I appreciate Mr. Zagrotzky, John, that, his comments. But really what we're talking here is the parameters that were set. It was capital deferments come first, don't want to touch the operating budgets. And so when an operating budget, the Board of Ed is being cut, I believe that by those very parameters set by the Board of Finance, all capital deferments should be exhausted before you get near operating expenses. I think that's at the heart of what a lot of, at least from my point of view, can't speak for everyone else on the Finance and Budget Committee, but that really what this comes down to. And that's, and, and, and part of that is, part of that's what my colleague Frank Edelman just said also, which is if you're going to cut operating from the education budget, you better go through and cut all the capital deferments. Again, and that capital deferment standard was set by the Board of Finance. The not wanting to touch operating expenses was a criteria set forth by the Board of Finance and the, frankly, the deferment to the various Board of Selectmen and Board of Education as to what constitutes an impact on the budget was not deferred to. And so that, that's why, at least from my point of view, my personal point of view, why I believe that these cuts are justified, that within the Board of Finance's own stated criteria. My frustration with this entire budget process was that the, the Board of, excuse me, the Finance and Budget Committee spent a lot of time, a lot of hard work to come up with a plan that would have avoided operating expense cuts in either budget. We sent that to the Board of Finance. There was not a lot of dialogue on this. And, and I think we would have liked to have seen that plan followed more closely, and maybe we wouldn't be having to make those difficult choices. I think the difficult choice that should have been made was to exhaust all capital deferment, capital deferments prior to getting into any operational budget cuts. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Seth, everybody with their hand raised has already spoken. Do you want to go back through or?
My, that
I have one new one.
It'd be time to move along here and, and vote on this amendment. It's 36,000? So why, why not do that? Can we ask those folks, how many people still have their hand up?
Now, just, we have Cheryl Russell, Adele Coniff, and Jack. Lucy Fiori, she's a new hand.
Spoken, guys.
We, we do have one new speaker.
Well, all right, let's recognize the new speaker.
Lucy Fiori?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I just wanted to comment on what Peter just said. The education budget is huge, so therefore there is room for some cuts there. Parks and Rec budget is miniscule. So I just think everyone should vote no. That's it.
Thank you, Lucy. I, I would like to see this voted on so that we can move along here. Do we still have people who want to talk?
We, yes, we do. We still have Cheryl Russell, Adele Coniff, Clara Sartori, Jack Davis.
Well, all right. I'm assuming you folks who still want to talk, that you have a new point you want to make. So let's just go alphabetic.
Adele? Adele, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to, just correct a couple of comments that were made, just so that everyone knows. It's not that, it's not the lines that are going to be painted on the tennis courts. It's the tennis court completely. Okay. Number two, what is, what is going, is to be replaced in the concession equipment is what is there now? It, it, what is there now that belongs to the vendor so that the parks, so that the town will then own the equipment? But it's just what is there now? The last comment is this. I spent nine years on the Board of Education, and I know the issues. I also know that it's really bad to pit the Selectmen's budget against the Board of Education budget. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Cheryl would be next.
I, I, are you there?
Yep.
I hit the hand button and it said lower hand. So I have nothing to say except I absolutely agree with Adele's last statement. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, last one is Jack.
Clara, Clara Sartori.
I just quickly, just quickly, I heard from Barbara Thorne just now by phone, and she is listening to the meeting but can't get into it. She, I thought you should know. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, that just leaves Jack.
Jack, should we move this along?
Yes, I just want to make a couple of comments here. First of all, the comment that you didn't get the reports to 6:45. From my knowledge, I'm the only committee that sent their reports out tonight. And in, in most cases, you would not have gotten the report until I went up there to give it. Number two, I think the problem here is that the original methodology is at question. With 75% of the capital being from the Board of Selectmen, but the methodology did not, was even, so that it required the Board of Finance to cut the Board of Education operations. F and B took a different approach by saying the first cut should be looking at what can be deferred. What are nice to haves this year versus need to haves? And most of that money, more than what came out, should have been coming out of the Board of Selectmen capital. It would have saved operations for both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. We would have been supporting the civilian dispatch this year. So I, I think that it's unfair to say that the methodology used by the Board of Finance did not by its own nature require the Board of Ed to do a cut. They did the cut. We're moving on from there. But to then say that we don't have the right to review the budget and make recommendations would say we are nothing more than a rubber stamp. And I don't believe the hard work that was put in by our 17 members on our committee, as well as the other 83 members of the RTM, is to be a rubber stamp.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Then it sounds like we're ready to vote. Does that look good, Kate, to you?
Yes. And so I'm going to try and do this, when people raise hands, I'll go down through the list alphabetically because I think this is going to be a So ask people, I'd like people to raise, when they're voting no, you have to raise your hand. You have to click the raise hand. Wait till we ask for the raise hand button and wait. Wait till we call out the, call out the names, okay? So Seth, if you're ready to go, I'm ready to go.
What, what yes and no mean here?
No means that the amendment for, to reduce the budget would fail. It doesn't mean it would fail, it means you're voting against it.
Okay, you got that. So raising your hand is a no vote. You, you do not want these cuts.
It's just the amendment three. The other two passed.
Okay, you ready? So raise your hand to vote no.
Okay, here we go.
I'm going to give it a minute just to let people get their hands raised before I start scrolling down through.
Right. You know, we're supposed to announce the totals on each one of these at some point.
Okay, well, that, I'm not sure we can do. Okay, so voting no, remember I'm going alphabetically by first name. Voting no, I have Adele Coniff, Amy Barzanti, Brad Pitelli, Brian Rayhill, Cassie McSiri. Colin Kelly, Derek Lublin, Diane Conalog, Edward Wasekka, Elizabeth Bacon, Emily McDermott, Jan Raymond, Janet Grogan, Jen Moller, Jim Cameron, Joan Davis, John Bolton, Lois Schneider, Lucy Fiori, Marcy Minnick, Marie Handler, Michael Cosolo, Monica McNally, Olive Hauser, Rob Warner, Rolf Oben, Sandra Savage, Sarah Baldwin, Sheila Sherwood, Sue Ellen Mitchell, Terry Duffy, Thomas Moore, Virginia Giannakammano. All right, that is, if you didn't hear your name, I missed Patty Baumgartner and Cheryl Russell. Is there anyone else that I missed? Okay. I count thirty-five noes, which would mean that the motion carries, well, we have abstentions.
Yeah, we do abstentions.
Yep. Do we have any abstentions? I have Scott Zimmerman abstaining and Suzanne Handler. Okay, so by my count, the motion passes.
Okay, so now we go to vote, uh, uh, the appropriation, uh, from the Reserve Fund for Capital Non-Recurring Expenditures as amended. Ready to vote? No votes.
Do you have a revised number? Jack? Go ahead, Jack.
Oh, I just unmuted. I believe before we vote, if there's any other committees that wanted to report on capital, this was the time that they want, were supposed to do it.
Yes, they could, yeah.
Okay, I have Monica McNally. Go ahead, Monica.
Okay. So, um, I'm Monica McNally, District Two, Chair of Public Works Committee of the RTM. This is the right time, right, Seth?
This is just capital. If you want to talk the operating budget, that would be next.
Okay, I'll wait for that. Sorry.
Okay.
I have Lucy Fiori.
Yeah.
Need to unmute yourself, Lucy?
My hand's raised by accident. I have nothing to say.
Okay.
All right, so did we get the abstentions?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes?
Yes. So now you need to go back to the main.
Now, now we, so, so the, the amendment three passed, so now we're going back uh, to the motion as a whole as amended. That's the appropriation for the Reserve Fund for Capital Non-Recurring Expenditures. Uh, no votes, please.
These are no, raise your hand if you're voting no on this main motion. I see Diane Conalog. I don't think Jack is voting no.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, I'm sorry, please, please raise your hand if you're voting no on the motion. So Diane Conalog, Olive Hauser. Let's see, we're going alphabetical order again. Adele Coniff, Diane Conalog, Jan Raymond, Janet Grogan, Olive Hauser, Sandra Savage, Sheila Sherwood, Sue Ellen Mitchell. That's it.
Uh, great, uh, and then, uh, abstentions?
Raise your hand to abstain. I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, motion passes. Next, Selectman's operating budget.
Excuse me, Kate?
Yes.
Did you get Lucy Fiori voting no and Cheryl Russell voting no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Selectman's operating budget, uh, for F and B, Jack Davis.
I'm Jack Davis, District Three, Chair of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I move Section B of the RTM Resolution twenty dash fifteen, authorizing and approving appropriations in the General Fund for the Selectman's operating budget. Do I have a second?
I see Stacy Ta and Terry Duffy, multiple seconds.
If there's no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. The overall town operating budget is forty-five million, down two point four million or five percent compared to the prior year's budget of forty-seven point seven million. By way of background, this portion of the budget is comprised of four primary parts. Town services, the library's operating budget grant, debt service, and transfers to the Reserve Fund for Capital Non-Recurring Expenditures. It's also important to note that this part of the budget is the appropriation for expenditures. Associated revenues are in, um, the mill rate calculation as an offset to amounts needed to be raised for taxes. I will address certain aspects of revenue, um, later in this document. I'm going to be brief because I anticipate other committees might be reporting. Town services. The Board of Finance adjusted the Board of Selectmen operating expenditure budget is up three hundred and forty thousand dollars or two percent without the library grant. As previously mentioned, a six hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase this year was associated with the change in the pension calculations. Those are good changes for us to do and to a certain extent, out of the board's control. But it should be noted, without that increase, the Board of Finance adjusted Board of Selectmen operating budget is down forty-one thousand dollars or fourteen basis points. The library operating, um, budget grant. The library, although privately owned, has an operating budget paid by the town. The library is responsible through fundraising for the purchase of books, technology, and capital improvements. The library proposed budget is three point, uh, nine nine seven million, up a hundred and seventy-six thousand or four point six percent from last year. The increase is primarily due to the pen, pension costs that we mentioned for the library and the retirement of the longtime library director. Changes were made to this budget by the Board of Selectmen, twenty-five thousand dollar reduction in the grant and the deferral of a truck. Debt service. Terms, conditions, and less length of any debt service is the purview of the Board of Finance. Only the town can issue debt. Neither the Board of Ed nor the tourist authority can do so. As such, total debt is a component of the town, which is attributable to capital and past projects. Total debt in the proposed budget is eight point nine million, down one point eight million or sixteen percent from the prior year. This is due to several events. The town early retired two point one million dollars of debt in December, using unassigned general funds. One point eight of that is attributable to fiscal year twenty-one. The remaining balance is attributable to fiscal year twenty-two. The town refinanced debt in, um, April, which resulted in savings of approximately two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. New debt has been issued for the Oxfordage Building, resulting in a premium of four million dollars, uh, most of which will be used to reduce future debt on the project, but a two hundred and sixteen thousand will be used to pay the first year interest. Specific to the component parts, town debt is three point four million, down six hundred and fifty thousand or sixteen percent from the prior year. Board of Ed debt is five point one million, down seven hundred and fifty thousand or thirteen percent from the prior year. And sewer debt is two hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, down three hundred and sixty-six thousand or fifty-one percent from the prior year. Um, in my report, I have, um, a chart of what the debt is, uh, which we received from the Director of Finance, but the town will have approximately sixty-nine point nine million of outstanding debt um, at, as of the end of this fiscal year. Debt is scheduled to be reduced by, um, another six point seven million next year. But that's not counting the proposed new debt that we'll be dealing with in Resolutions twenty seventeen and eighteen or additional Oxfordage debt, which we would expect to be occurring sometime during fiscal twenty-one. Capital contributions is the transfer. We did review all the accounts here, and this is our last motion that we made. F and B has reduced, reviewed the use of the Board of Finance contingency account that resides in the Board of Selectmen operating budget. At this time, I move to cutting the budget from four hundred thousand to three hundred thousand or a cut of one hundred thousand. Do I have a second?
Yes, he has a second.
Thank you. This account has not been fully used over the last few years. As the writing of this report, less than fifty thousand has been used this year. F and B believes that a reduction of a hundred thousand is warranted and still allows the Board of Finance to address future unexpected items arising out of COVID-nineteen. That is because there's other sources of funding for COVID-nineteen, including but not limited to the capital contingency account, bonding for any capital items as we consolidate, FEMA reimbursements, which actually have no bearing on what the town worth is, but rather whether or not we meet those criteria, state reimbursements, appropriations from the General Fund, which would require RTM approval. And in extreme circumstances, the Board of Finance and RTM can approve the supplemental tax for an extremely large expense. We also have over twenty, um, we will have over twenty-three million dollars in our general fund. We believe that larger items should come back to the RTM for approval and therefore, three hundred thousand amply covers smaller expenses that may occur. A discussion of larger items that was done by a former Board of Finance member and myself, who've been doing this over the last ten years, yielded only one large, um, purchase for about eighty thousand dollars, we believe, for EverSource. We also believe that both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed manage their expenses well and make appropriate transfers between expense categories and cost standards when and if required, without coming back to the Board of Finance to use their contingency. Therefore, in this time of need and wanting to reduce taxes, F and B felt that the four, four hundred thousand is not needed at this time. The Board of Finance stated that to both the Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen that if significant expenses do arise, both need to trust the Board of Finance will respond. F and B, F and B believes the RTM has been quick and responsive. As an example, we approved the change of using unassigned general fund balances the same night of the Board of Finance allowing early retirement of the debt one month earlier than anticipated. We were able to do it in December as opposed to January. The Board of Finance needs to trust the RTM that the RTM will respond as well on a timely basis. This resolution amendment passed the RT, uh, the F and B Committee unanimously, and we recommend the same to the full RTM.
Thank you, Jack. Um, other committees?
I have, um, Susan Handler.
Uh, speaking.
Suzanne Handler.
Yeah, Suzanne is speaking for what committee?
I don't know.
That.
She has her hand raised. Okay, we'll move on to Matt Patrick.
Mac?
Yeah, hi, uh, good evening. Um, Matt Patrick, Chairman of Public Health and Safety. We met on June third with fourteen of seventeen members present to discuss portions of the budget relating to police, fire, disaster preparedness, emergency medical services, and human service. Um, the police budget has an overall increase of two point two percent, primarily driven by negotiated wage increases and patrol personnel expenditures. Decreases are occurring in professional standard expenses. Three civilian dispatchers were removed from the budget, deferred for one year, and no lack of services are to be expected. The fire budget has an overall increase of one point seven percent, primarily due to contractual obligations. The three all-volunteer fire departments have decreases in equipment repair and replacement costs. The Fire Commission and Fire Marshal budgets have increases driven by greater part-time hours of the blight officer under the Fire Marshal. Increases are occurring in professional services, hoarding, and blight issues. Ongoing savings are expected in software maintenance. It should be noted that the town budget for fire is one point seven million versus eight point one million for the police department. The town greatly benefits from an all-volunteer fire department. Emergency medical service or post-fifty-three budget is up three point two five percent or forty-two hundred dollars and is radio-related. It is noteworthy, the staffing of post-fifty-three is all volunteer and much of the operation is self-funded through donations. The full-town funded budget is about a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Incredible. Um, human service includes human services and outside assistance, senior center, senior transportation, youth services, and the public health department. The overall budget is up three point eight percent, primarily driven by increased senior center expenditures and part-time hires. The public health department's budget is up one point five percent with increases in personnel and contractual services. This budget of three hundred and forty-five thousand receives revenues of a hundred and nineteen thousand from licenses and permits. Youth services budget is up two percent due to anticipated increased enrollments in various programs. Public Health and Safety Committee voted unanimously to approve the noted portions of the budget and recommend the same for the full RTM. Thank you.
Thanks, Mac. Uh, excuse me, did I make an error there? We had an amendment, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jack. Uh, yeah, we should be talking to the amendments. No, no, no problem with Mac. Not Mac.
Not at all.
But we should have, uh, we should be talking to the amendment. Uh, excuse me for that. So, um, uh, those, uh, any committees wanting to talk on the amendment?
I have several hands raised. Um, Joanne Switkowski?
Once we go through the committees, if there are any on that, then, uh, I'm gonna go to the floor, so. Go ahead, go ahead, Kate.
Okay, Joanne Switkowski, you can unmute yourself and speak. Joanne? You're, you're self-muted. You need to unmute yourself if you want to speak. Okay. Uh, I've got Clara Sartori. Go ahead, Clara, uh, that's. Lost Clara. Cheryl Russell.
I'm unmuted.
I'm unmuted.
Yes, you're unmuted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have anything to say about this one.
Okay, don't raise your hand unless you want to speak, please. Suzanne Handler? Suzanne Handler, you have your hand raised to speak?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Okay. Then I've got-- Mac Patrick has his hand raised still. Mac, did you want to make additional comments?
No.
No, okay. All right.
So, looks like we are ready to vote on the amendment? Kate?
I would say--
Okay.
Give me one second. Just give me one second to get back to this top.
Okay.
Olive Hauser, are you-- Olive, go ahead. Are you commenting or voting, Olive? Okay. I'm putting all hands down. So Seth, if you want to call for a vote on the amendment?
Okay. No votes, please, on the amendment.
I'm going to read down Adelle Coniff, Clara Sartori, Janet Rogan, Jim Cameron, Olive Hauser, Sandra Savage.
And Joan Davis.
Joan Davis, thank you. All right, I'm going to lower the hands. I counted eight no votes. We have-- Somebody asked, one, two--
Kate, once again, Cheryl Russell--
One more moment. Four. We have 96 members present. So Cheryl Russell voted no. That's nine no votes.
Okay, and abstentions, so?
Please raise your hand to abstain. I have Linda Terhune abstaining. I do not see any other abstentions. So that's nine no's, one abstaining.
Okay, so the amendment passes. We now go to the vote on the operating budget, Selectmen's operating budget as amended. Are there any comments on that? Any discussion?
Go ahead, Jack.
Seth, as this motion is passed and we're now in the operating budget, I believe Monica wanted to give the report and all of the committee reports should be reporting at this time.
Yep. If they're-- yeah, if they're committee report, I did ask. But yeah, go ahead, guys. For committee reports, if you would put your hand up, we'll have you recognized.
Monica, you can unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Monica McNally, District 2, Chair of Public Works of the RTM. At a special meeting of the Public Works Committee held on May 27th with 11 to 12 members present, the Public Works Committee considered and voted unanimously to recommend approval to the full RTM of the Public Works capital expenditures and Public Works operating portions of the 2021 Board of Finance budget. The committee reviewed and discussed the budget in detail with Public Works Director Ed Gentow. The budget reflects no change in the number of full-time employees or part-time employees. There is an overall budget and increase in spending of $37,604 or 0.8% on a total appropriations budget of $4,389,006. Public Works Department continues to make meaningful and measurable improvements to the service provided to the town. The department is impacted by COVID-19 in a variety of ways. The transfer station has had extra workers assigned to cover certain shifts to ensure no cross-contamination between crews. The department has been busy cleaning, disinfecting, and putting up protected tempered glass barriers at town government buildings. The Westner Road and Intersection Project has been delayed while awaiting the notarization of three easements unable to be attained because of the lockdown. The bulk waste pickup day may be rescheduled for the fall as well as the household hazardous waste day. Excuse me. All efforts are being made to keep to the road paving scheduled for August, although the prep work of drainage and road shoulder clearing is late getting started. Almost six miles of road are scheduled to be paved this year, leading to an increase in the budget of $47,300 or 5.2% on the $950,000 total. $400 of that amount is recommended to be funded through bonding. The sidewalk rehabilitation and repair amount of $503,000 is recommended to be funded through bonding. The capital request for $75,000 for new sidewalk installation, it's about 350 feet on West Avenue, is recommended to be funded through bonding. On June 1st, the Public Works Department started selling refuse permit stickers online only. Current stickers will not expire until September 1st. The revenue budget increase of 10% or $28,000 reflects the collection date being pushed out one quarter into the new fiscal year, as some of the collections normally occurring in June will be spread over July and August. Other notable, the motor fuel and lubricants contract was secured in mid-December at an increase of 1% or $13,434. The electricity budget decrease of 6% or $7,040 reflects lower usage and savings from the solar panel installations. Cost savings continue to accrue in the waste management area. We now recycle in Darien 26% more tonnage than we paid to have hauled away. That's versus 10% last year. The lower volume of haulage has led to a $306,055 savings on our solid waste disposal costs. The food scrap program is also ahead of schedule and is collecting on average over three tons of material a month to be composted. This is also contributing to savings from a decrease in tonnage removal. The town has expanded the recycling program to include paint and mattresses. There have been questions raised regarding the single-stream recycling program and fees. Under a contract with City Carding, Darien receives $7.50 a ton until 2024. This year, that program generated $24,330 in revenue. You can see that recycling works. The price of scrap metal fluctuates greatly. The drop in revenue of $17,000 or 46% reflects current market conditions. The Public Works Committee greatly appreciates the consistent, high-quality work and the level of service of the Public Works Department. We ask you to vote yes and ratify Item 2015 and 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. I don't see anybody, Seth.
Okay. Great. Comments from the floor?
I'm not seeing anything. Monica?
Say again?
Monica has her hand up again.
And we are asking you to vote yes and ratify Item 20-17 also. Thank you.
So we're ready to vote on the Selectmen's operating budget as amended? No votes, please.
Okay, raise your hand to vote no. I see Diane Conalog and Olive Hauser voting no. I'm going to lower the hands. Lisi Yarnell has her hand raised. Okay, so I have three no votes.
Sorry.
And I have--
Cheryl Russell?
I have Cheryl Russell, so I have four no votes. Five no votes, Jay Hardison. Okay. Last call for the no votes. I'm going to lower the hands.
Okay, so now abstentions?
I have Sheila Sherwood abstaining. Are there any other abstentions? Okay, I have just the one abstention.
All right.
Lower the hands.
Motion passes. Next item, the Education Operating Budget. Speaking for the Education Committee, Clara Sartori.
Go ahead. Clara, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to move Resolution 2015, Item C. And can I have a second?
Yes, I have multiple seconds.
Right, okay. If there are no objections, I'm going to propose waiving of the resolution. No objections?
No objections.
Okay, good. I did send this report out earlier today. I don't know if you all got it, but I'll read it, I guess. The RTM Education Committee met remotely on Wednesday, June 3rd, with 11 of 13 members present to discuss and vote on the appropriation from the general fund for the Education Operating Budget. This meeting was preceded by a remote meeting on May 20th, attended by Board of Ed Chair Tara Offman and Superintendent Alan Oddly. The Education Committee voted 10 in favor and one abstention to support the appropriation of $102,496,378 and asks that the RTM do the same. It should be noted that three members stated that their yes vote was under duress, explaining that they considered voting no on the budget as a means of indicating dissatisfaction with the lack of a more collaborative approach on the part of the Board of Finance. The abstaining member voted as such to show his dissatisfaction with the process and to express the uncertainty over an acceptable budget outcome. Moreover, he believes that voting on an incomplete budget with a funding gap, just because our RTM deadline so dictates, creates a potentially dangerous precedent. He hopes that through discussions with several individual Board members, Board of Ed members, during the period between our committee vote on June 3rd and today, he would receive further assurances, albeit informal, that the educational priorities would not be compromised in the final reconciled budget so that he can vote for the proposed budget during tonight's RTM vote. It is the RTM Committee's job to examine the Board of Education's budget to determine whether taxpayers' funds allocated to the Board of Ed are sufficient to fulfill State of Connecticut requirements and district educational priorities effectively and efficiently. The Education Committee cannot address line items in the budget, but it can question the value of programs and the impact of the elimination of those programs on the educational system as a whole. The RTM can reduce, but cannot increase, the school budget. Many Education Committee members spoke in favor of using some of the surplus in the 2019-2020 budget to pre-purchase various items, such as ninth-grade iPads and elementary school routers, making the point that taxpayers were taxed for these education funds in 2019-20. Furthermore, the available funds would be maximized when the district gets a discount on these items. A majority of the members of the Education Committee noted that a lack of collaboration or informed dialogue between the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance has put the Board of Education in a position where they have no choice but to make a $1 million, more than $1 million or 1.02% reduction in their budget to meet the directive imposed by the Board of Finance. At a time when priorities should be given to crafting a strategy for reopening the schools under COVID-19 regulations, the Board of Ed and administration have the difficult task of choosing the least bad options for modification while maintaining educational standards for students in this time of uncertainty. Committee members were adamant that modifications to the budget should not involve academic programs that benefit students. Extracurricular activities, which are integral to student development, should be maintained whenever possible. The economic consequences of the pandemic, coupled with the increases in the education budget over the past several years, certainly call for restraint. However, the committee questioned what appeared to be extreme measures imposed to bring about a flat tax levy. According to one analysis, the expected cuts may result in long-term consequences for the school district while saving a household approximately $200 to $300 in the short term. In this unprecedented time, the Board of Ed needs some flexibility to cover unexpected expenses related to COVID-19. Additional personnel, equipment, and space will likely be required. Transportation needs will be revisited. More rigorous cleaning and disinfecting will be mandated. Enrollment may increase with families moving out of cities and students returning to Darien from private and boarding schools. In terms of services, there will likely be a need for remedial services, mental health support, and increased attention to physical well-being, requiring additional nursing staff. More technology and more contracted service will be required to support student needs. There will be new guidelines for school attendance, likely involving fewer students per classroom, as well as staggered entry times or possible half sessions. E-learning may continue along with limited classroom attendance. Revenue appears to be declining as expenses related to COVID-19 increase. Summer school enrollment is down. Tuition revenue from the early learning program has decreased as enrollment of typical peers has declined. Decreased reimbursements from the state will amplify the shortfall. In essence, the Board of Ed is requesting more than $102 million and a lot of flexibility in how taxpayer funds will be spent. At this very unique time, the community will be best served by more transparency, straightforward discussion, and less politics. Darien deserves to see collaborative dialogue among the Board of Education and among town boards. Public scrutiny of a budget has never been more important than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara. Speaking for Finance and Budget, Jack Davis.
Let me get to him. Jack, you need to unmute yourself.
Yep, just did. I want to thank Clara for an outstanding report. And I'm going to be quite short in this area. One other point that I want to make in addition to build on what Clara said. In the state of Connecticut, Board of Eds are elected by local citizenry, and their operating expenses are funded by local taxes, but their authority comes from the state. Our committee attended numerous Board of Ed meetings, held multiple discussions prior to the Board of Finance changes, as well as after. Most of the main points have already been presented. We chose in F and B not to discuss potential cuts offered by the administration as the Board of Ed has not yet fully vetted these items. At our meeting on June 4th, F and B voted unanimously to approve the Education Operating Budget as amended by the Board of Finance and recommend the same to the full RTM. As an aside, one member voted in favor, although they objected to the budget as presented by the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. On the outside chance, there might be another committee that wanted to speak about it. I'll open that. Any other? Committee? Okay. The floor, any comments from the floor?
Yeah, we had Teresa vote.
Okay, Teresa.
Teresa? Teresa, you can go ahead. I am not hearing anything. Let's give her a chance to get.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Teresa Voight, District 6. I'm the Vice Chair of the Education Committee, but my comments right now are not on behalf of the Education Committee. I would like to actually discuss the partisan behavior, the lack of transparency, and the behind-the-scenes communications of certain Board of Ed members, as well as public comments that I found condescending toward the administration and Darien taxpayers made by the Chair of the Board of Finance. My personal philosophy regarding the education of our students has been informed by years of volunteer work in the classroom with our teachers, as well as working directly with the administration as a PTO Chair, a member of the Executive Board of several PTOs, and as a member of the RTM Education Committee. Up until this year, the Board of Education has always worked collaboratively across party lines to achieve exceptional outcomes for all of our students, as well as supporting our teachers and administrators. Unfortunately, this year's process has been derailed by blatant partisan behavior that has negatively impacted the budget. In my opinion, there should be no room for partisan behavior when the town creates a budget to meet the needs of our children. When a parent attends a Board of Ed meeting, they should not be able to identify the political affiliation of each member. For the first time in my five years that I have been regularly attending Board of Ed meetings, I witnessed partisan behavior supersede the best interests of our children. During a February Board of Ed meeting, during public comment, I went on the record to express my dissatisfaction with that behavior I had seen at prior meetings. Last week, five Republican members of the Board of Education met to discuss their plans to cut for the budget. Despite hiding behind the term caucus, their actions violated the spirit of Robert's Rules of Order. It was a quorum, and at tomorrow night's Board of Ed meeting, when specific line items are discussed that will impact our students, this quorum will be on lockstep with their predetermined majority vote. Transparency and healthy discussion should be the norm, even if it means the meeting will last for hours. We owe that to our taxpayers, and more importantly, we owe that to our children. As for the Board of Finance, two meetings stand out. At the May 12 Board of Finance.
Mr. Chairman, point of order? Mr. Attorney, a point of order?
Yes.
What does this have to do with the budget? And this is now, the speaker is talking about partisanship. This is as partisan as it gets. There was a letter in the newspaper today that. I think this needs to be stopped.
Yes, I heard what you said.
You know what? Other people got to speak about this. I should get my chance.
No, this is not about the budget. This is a budget meeting.
Yes.
It's about the budget process.
No, this is inappropriate for this time.
No, I will allow the discussion on it, but I just, let's watch bringing politics into this because that's not the nature of this.
Mr. Chairman, this speech by this speaker mirrors a letter to the editor today by several Democrats who have, and I believe that this is a partisan attempt to smear some Republicans who have did a lawful caucus. I'm sorry.
Yes, I.
This is completely inappropriate.
There were no names mentioned. And so, it's, I agree with you. It's right.
It's inappropriate.
Yeah. Yep.
Other members got to express their dissatisfaction with some of tonight's issues, so I should have my say. And I'm almost done.
Miss, I'm sorry. Not when you're going to toss politics, political parties into it. If you want to discuss.
Well, unfortunately, Seth, it came into play during this budget process. So I'll end my comments right now, but I just want to make it known that was the process this year.
Yes, you can discuss that without, you can easily say that without getting into which.
Well, I would rather have gotten into specifics, so thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay. Others?
You had Sarah Parent.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to go on the record and state that while I will be voting to approve the budget tonight, I fundamentally disagree with the approach that was taken by the Board of Finance for this year's education budget and the cuts that were made to it. If I could make a motion now to add to the education budget, I would, but unfortunately, that is not an option that we have. I just want to say that the meetings that the Board of Finance held were disrespectful to and dismissive of the district's administrative team, the Board of Education members, and the many constituents who voiced their opinions. I'm grateful to the Education Committee and the F&amp;B Committee for their full support of Darien's children. Thank you.
Okay.
Carolina Magui. Go ahead, Carolina.
Hi, Karina Magui, District 3, also a member of the Education Committee, speaking tonight on my own, not as a member of the Education Committee. God, I already shared those. I just want to say that I'm very frustrated with how the Board of Finance behaved during this post-COVID budget process. It should have been a collaborative effort between the administration, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Education on behalf of our children, our town, and it was nothing but. I'm also very upset by the way Dr. Adley was treated during the Board of Finance meeting that he, Richard Rodel, and Tara were personally at. I find it to be extremely disrespectful, and for that, I would like to apologize to both of them. We are better than that. And in the coming weeks, my hope is that the administration and the full Board of Education, and not those from a specific party, work together to finalize painful decisions on what will eventually be cut from the budget to arrive at the number the Board of Finance imposed on them. This has to be a process that we, the public, and your electors trust. It has to be a process that is transparent and made as the group that you are. Thank you.
Okay, then we had Peter Marusik.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, I'm Peter Marusik, District 3. Every spring, we, as the RTM, judge whether proposed budgets allow the town services and the school system to function not only according to the law, but also in quality be all deemed appropriate. Review budget, which are known not only in the absolute, but also in the specific. This year is different. As of today, we do not have finally agreed upon spending detailed hand from the Board of Education. What we do know is that even after delaying several capital projects, there is still about $1 million funding gap. $1 million does not seem like much in the context of a $102 million education budget. But public schools do not have the cost structure flexibility of a regular business. They're public good and are required by law to deliver services in quality and quantity determined by the state. In fact, our outstanding School Superintendent Dr. Adley has recently said that his recommendations to close this funding gap include some very difficult choices that would significantly affect the quality of education. I applaud the Board of Finance's goal to hold our collective taxes flat in this year of economic uncertainty and for having charged all town officials to seek efficiencies. And I realize that much is unknown in the near term as pandemic walls start to crystallize. I strongly oppose cuts that impact student learning and quality of education in our town. I fundamentally believe that these are the exact times we ought to show our residents that we not only manage our finances in prudent manner, but also do not alter our long-term education plans and compromise our values, especially given the fact that our unassigned fund balance is about $7 million above our self-stated target levels. This implies that a portion of taxes collected in the recent past has not been spent on current residents. Therefore, I urge the Board of Education to expeditiously finalize their budget. They come to the conclusion that a part of requested savings would in fact impact student learning. I hope they will come back to the Board of Finance. In such scenario, I urge the Board of Finance to request the RTM to discuss and approve an appropriation, sorry, to bridge the remaining funding gap. For the future, I hope that all elected boards present the RTM with complete and reconciled budgets prior to our vote. Doing otherwise sets up a bad and dangerous precedent. All that said, given the current unwieldy rules we have set for ourselves in this body, the reality is that voting against the proposed budget resolution would actually lower appropriate funds for the upcoming year for our students. So despite my disagreement with the process and while uncertain about the ultimate outcome, I will vote to approve the budget as presented. But I do believe that this year's unusual circumstances have revealed inefficiencies in our processes, which gives us an opportunity to make our system more resilient and participatory in the future. Specifically, I believe that an explicit setting of a narrow range of future statutory tax rate by the Board of Finance at the beginning of a budget process each year would give the town and the school officials visibility and certainty in their budget preparations. And more fundamentally, we all ought to examine whether we want the ultimate decision-making power regarding our taxation and spending to live within a group of five at Board of Selectment, a group of seven at Board of Finance, a group of nine at Board of Education, or here within this body. In conclusion, over the last couple of years, as a member of the RTM, I've had the privilege to interact with many town officials, and I want to thank them for their commitment and dedication. But we owe it to all Darien residents to set up a system and a process that works better. We must do better. Thank you.
Okay. Seth, just for, because I've had a couple of questions for the record for the minutes. It was Mr. Bolton who raised the point of order.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I didn't. I couldn't tell it was you, John, sorry.
So I have Frank Edelman.
Okay. Frank?
Yeah, thank you, Seth, and thank you, Kate. I want to very briefly express that I'll be voting in favor of the school budget this evening, but very reluctantly. I'm deeply disappointed by the actions of the Board of Finance to unilaterally reduce the Board of Education operating budget by over $1 million. Superintendent Adley made very clear to the Board of Finance that he'd already reduced his budget request to achieve their approved, the Board of Ed approved amount of $103.5 million. And Superintendent Adley also clearly stated that further reduction by over $1 million would have a direct, meaningful, and negative impact on educational experience of our students. Board of Finance, and in particular, the Chair, Mr. Zagrowski, need to be held accountable for their decision to undermine the thoughtful and reasoned budget developed by Dr. Adley and his administration and approved by the Board of Ed. It's easy to blindly say that the reduction is only a percent of the budget. Can't you simply save a penny out of every dollar? But the reality, as the prior speaker said, is that most schools' costs are fixed in advance, including personnel costs, which are the large majority of expenses, as well as key elements of special education. So the $1 million-plus reduction comes out of a much smaller portion of the total budget and will have a much more disproportionate impact. Dr. Adley detailed the potential impacts of this reduction on the program. Teachers support some extracurriculars. In the interest of time, I won't recite that now. I'll encourage the RTM members to review Dr. Adley's 13th letter to the district parents and to review the minutes and the videos of the Board of Ed meetings. The imposition of the reduction is counterproductive to both the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance. In total, it's a large enough cut to have a significant negative impact on education, but at the individual taxpayer level, it won't be enough of a benefit so that any taxpayer can afford to make a property tax payment that would have otherwise been missed. So it's enough to hurt the kids, but not enough to provide a meeting who benefits anyone. I will be voting in favor of the education budget simply because the RTM does not have the authority to increase the spending, and the rejection of the budget would be a worse outcome. But I'm deeply disappointed with the short-sighted actions of the Board of Finance. The COVID crisis is going to impose a host of new expenses on the school operations, and this is a time to spend supportive students and families that need continuity and ongoing support. It's not a time to take support away from the schools and their performance more vulnerable students. Thank you, Seth, and thank you, Kate.
Okay, next I have Cheryl Russell.
Okay, Cheryl.
Well, I've been on this RTM for 31 years. And at many times, I have stood alone when we had 90 people on this RTM, and I stood alone and voted no on the education budget. Some of you will remember that. Tonight, I am going to vote no on the education budget again. The Board of Finance is trying to do its due diligence to try and keep our taxes and keep us so that we, the people of this town that have lost jobs, are unemployed for now, or they don't know whether they're going back to work and trying to keep our taxes low and help us out in some sort of fashion. The Board of Education was asked to make a cut by the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance did not tell them where to cut. I'm upset that I heard that they've cut teachers and they've cut programs from our children. I don't think it's necessary to make a cut there. I think it's necessary to make a cut at the top. I think there's things that could be done if they'd come to the table with the Board of Selectment, and maybe we could merge our maintenance departments together, which they've been asked to do for many years, and they haven't sat down with us. I think that there's a lot of other places that they could cut from in order to make this a palatable budget for us all and to keep our tax rate down this year. I know COVID-19 has put a strain on everyone, and I think that we need to take a breath, try and make things work for the taxpayers of this town that aren't working and that may never go back to work or may have to be out of work for another year. But I know things are going to come down the pike next year, but we have to be prepared for that and let us have a little reprieve right now. But I think the Board of Education can make some cuts in other areas than taking away from our children. Thank you.
Okay, I have David Bain.
David?
Hi, David Bain, District 5. I'd just like to object to the use of a point of order to cut off an RTM member's statement about the Board of Education. I just think that's inappropriate. I think, you know, as an RTM member, Teresa Voight had the privilege to be heard, and to have, in a moderated meeting, another RTM member interrupt her in the middle of her statement is not an appropriate way to go forward here. So I plan to vote in favor of the Board of Education budget, but I am deeply disturbed at the way that this meeting, or at least that Ms. Voight was cut off here. I don't think it's appropriate, and I don't think it should go forward in the future. Thank you.
There was an introduction of, I think the point of order was correct, and in this environment, you can't, you know, they have, there's not much choice here. You have to sort of shout out point of order. We, as you know, don't introduce politics into this thing. And when she started talking about one party, it got to be a little bit over the top. So, you know, we're all learning, and we'll continue to do that. Anybody else, Kate?
Lisa Yarnell. Lisa?
Yes?
Do you have your hand raised?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, I wanted to just let you know that I did not vote no on the prior amendment. My hand was up to second jack, and I tried several times to get your attention, but you were counting. So could you please correct the record?
Yes. No problem. Okay. I had Jan Raymond.
Jan?
Thank you, Kate. Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. I'm new to the RTM this year,
I'm new to the RTM this year, although I did serve back in the dark ages of the late 70s, I think.
I swear I remember you, Jen.
What?
I said, "I swear I remember you."
I'm sure you do, Seth. I remember you. In any event, I'm really feeling quite distressed, having come back on after all of these years, to hear the dysfunction that appears to be evident between the committees on the RTM, and the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance, and the Board of Education. I've been distressed to hear people say that people on the RTM committee should not be coming back at this point with ideas and cuts. If the idea is to just rubber stamp whatever the Board of Finance does, then why have an RTM? In terms of the Board of Ed budget, I will vote for it, but I will vote for it under duress, because I don't think that the investment in our children and our students is enough this year, because of all the things that other people have said about COVID, small classes, cleansing. I will not be surprised if we don't get the money from the state that we expect and we frequently budget for. We know the state's in a tight position, so I would expect some cuts there, and while indeed, we may have more students because of the fact that people may move out, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have an increased tax base. If the houses that they're moving into are not new houses, we're not going to have more property taxes. The property taxes are going to be the same that they are now. It's the building and the house and the property, not the person that lives in it. So I'm very concerned about the cuts being made now. I'm very concerned about the lack of dialogue between the Board of Education and the Board of Finance, and I'm very concerned about the idea that somehow a Board of Ed can just make cuts other places that don't impact students. Cutting people, quote, "at the top" is a nice thing to say. I've heard it. Cheryl, you know, I've been around as long as you have, longer than you have. I've heard that forever. It's not something that's easily done. If you take a person out of a position making policy in the central office, make a big gap. I know I've been on for too long. I just want to say that I will be voting for the budget, and I hope this is the very last year that I hear this kind of lack of cooperation and lack of concern from the Board of Finance to all of the other boards in town. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jen.
Janet Grogan.
Janet?
Janet, you need to unmute yourself. Janet Grogan? Okay. Go ahead.
I'm just, this is Janet Grogan. I'm on the Education Committee, and I'm just echoing what David Bain said. My hand has been up for a long time, and with all the protocols surrounding this meeting, that somebody could just interrupt Teresa seemed just not good at all. And now my hand has been up ever since that happened, but thank you for recognizing me.
Sorry we missed you, Janet. I'm sorry.
No, I was going in order of how they appeared. So now I have Beth Lane.
Hello, this is Beth Lane in District 3. I'm on the F&amp;B Committee, and I just wanted to make two quick points. The first of which is that when Teresa Boyd was talking, she was discussing the budget because she was discussing the process by which the Board of Finance arrived at the budget. That is well within the purview of the discussions this evening, and so it was completely germane to her point and to our discussion this evening. Second of all, I just wanted to say that I will, of course, support the education budget because I support the education of our children, but I am holding my nose to vote for this budget because it is taking a pretty deep cut, and there really aren't many places to go. I have spent a good deal of time going over this education budget. I am one of the co-Vice Chairs of the F&amp;B Committee for Education. I have seen every Board of Ed meeting. I know what went into this, and there is, once you get rid, carve out teacher contracts, salaries, things like that, there is very little to cut. And frankly, the superintendent did a very good job presenting a pretty lean budget to begin with before any of the COVID things started. So I support this budget, but reluctantly at best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Michael Cosolo.
Hi, this is Michael Cosolo, speaking just as an individual RTM member. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but like others, I will be supporting the budget, but under duress. I think that, in addition to the thing, many of the things that were said, and given the time, I won't repeat those, there's one major concern that I have about how lean the budget has gone this year. And to be fair to all those that have worked on it, I don't think it could have been anticipated at the time the budgets were being developed and being reduced, but I think that it's in high likelihood there will be a significant increase in student population come the fall that people have not anticipated or seen in the past, given what's going on with the residential real estate market in Darien due to COVID. And with the budget being as tight as it is, I think it's going to be an interesting thing to see what happens when we have, as I predict, could be wrong, a substantial increase in schoolchildren.
Thank you.
That's, okay, Stacy Ta.
I'm going to repeat what I said at the F&amp;B meeting on Thursday night. I disagree with the process and position the Board of Finance took. I believe some members of the Board of Finance used the pandemic to further their own agendas. Those members publicly stated their decisions were predetermined before they even came to the table to do any work. As elected officials, we are called to work publicly and transparently. Instead, several members of the Board of Finance chose to use their time to attack and dismiss constituents for exercising their right to participate in the democratic process. I hope the taxpayers never forget how certain members of the Board of Finance worked to avoid compromise in collegial discussions. I hope the taxpayers will run against them next year, and I hope they vote.
All right, Seth, at this time.
Are we ready to move here?
I have Lisa Yarnell.
Lisa?
Yeah, I don't have anything to say. I was trying to let you know before.
Okay. Look, are we ready to vote on this? How are we looking?
Let me just mute a couple. All right, I think you're, right, so. I have one more. David Bain with his hand raised.
David?
Yeah, Seth, I just want to respond to your comments that there should be no magic words to cut off a debate from an RTM member. We have a privilege to speak, and we may not like what they have to say, but they ought to be able to say it. And it's very difficult for people to stand up before this body, particularly in this environment, and have their say, and to cut them off so peremptorily really sends a chilling message to RTM members. So I hope you'll consider in the future to let people have their say and, you know, make their positions known, and we can take them for what they're worth. Sorry to keep you waiting on this, but thank you.
One of the interesting parts of being the moderator is, once in a while, they have to make a hard call. There was a point of order raised, and I think they were right, so I, that's why I agree.
Point of order, Seth, because you actually, you actually were going to let her go, and then Mr. Bolton kept bullying you, and then you changed your mind.
Miss, I'm not going to get into personal stuff on this. I saw it that way, and that's the way I called it. Now, are we ready to vote?
I have a couple hands, one hand raised from a person who has not spoken. Shannon Sillsby.
Hi, everyone. Just one quick comment.
It's on the education operating budget, Shannon.
Yes, it is. Just to follow up, David, David, thank you for those words. And what's so interesting to me is exactly what we are making a point about, the behavior of Mr. Bolton, is exactly what we're pointing out in the budget process that made the process not work. Very similar behavior that should be eradicated. Thank you.
Let's take the personal stuff out of this, all right? If you, if you notice, when they talk in the Senate, they may be referring to somebody. They say, "But my distinguished colleague," or something of that matter, they do not yell at each other's names, okay? That's the only point that we're making. Okay, I got that. Now, are we ready to vote on the operating budget here?
I have a couple hands raised. Three of them have already spoken. One is Mr. Bolton.
All right.
I believe, John Bolton, I'm sorry, John Bolton, Lisa Yarnell, Jen Raymond, Janet Grogan, all with hands raised.
All right. But keep it short, right, guys? Go ahead, just take them alphabetic, I think.
No, I'm sorry. That was a mistake. I didn't, but although I don't appreciate the smears by some of the RTM members, but never mind.
Okay, John, thanks. Go ahead, Kate.
I do not have my hand raised.
Yes, you do. I'll put it down. Thank you.
I don't.
Clara?
There's something wrong with the control.
Okay, Lisa, I've got to mute you.
I was wondering if we could call the question.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do here. I think, are we there, Kate?
I think so.
I'm not allowed to do it, but I was just trying to urge everybody to move along here and vote on this. How are we looking, Kate?
I'm ready for you, if you are.
Okay, good. Then let's, we'll go ahead and vote on the education operating budget. No votes, please?
Please raise your hands. Okay, again, I'm going to go alphabetically by your first name. I have Cheryl Russell. Janet Grogan, Jay Hardison. Terry Duffy. All right, I have Joan Davis. Okay, those are the no votes I have. That is five no votes.
Okay, abstentions?
Let me, wait, let me put down the no votes. Okay, abstentions, please raise your hand. I say again, abstentions, please raise your hands. If you already, if you voted no, please, I'm going to put hands down. Please raise your. I've got Sandra Savage, no. I'm sorry, abstaining. That's the only abstention I see. Ms. Grogan, are you a no or an abstention?
This is Janet Grogan. I am neither of no or an abstention.
Okay, let's put your hand down then. Okay, so Seth, I have five no's, one abstention.
Okay, the motion passes. Next item, total appropriations for the general fund. Do we have a number for that, Jack?
I bet we asked Jen.
Jen, do we have a number?
For the final total appropriation?
Yes.
It is $147,544, I'm sorry, $147,544,069.
All right.
$147,544,069.
Nice job. Thank you. Okay, speaking for Finance and Budget, Jack Davis. Total appropriations in the general fund.
Go ahead, Jack.
It's good to know that I can add just as well as Jen. I move Section D of the RTM Resolution 20-15 authorizing and approving the appropriations of total appropriations in the general fund in the amount of $147,544,069. Is there a second?
I see three seconds.
This is nothing more than a mere mathematical addition by adding sections B and C. At our meeting on June 4th, the F&amp;B Committee voted unanimously on the revised amount, and recommends the same to the full RTM.
Thank you. Okay. On the total? All right, let's, no votes, please?
Give it a little bit. All right, I have Jay Hardison, Cheryl Russell, Diane Conalog, Sandra Savage voting no. Lowering those hands. Abstentions? I have Terry Duffy abstaining. Okay. So you have four no's, one abstention.
Motion carries. Next item, establish a mill rate. Jen, do we have a mill rate?
16.33.
That's what I have, Jen.
There we are.
Okay.
This, go, Jack.
I move Section E of the RTM Resolution 20-15 authorizing and approving the mill rate of 16.33. Do I have a second?
I see multiple seconds.
If there's no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. This item sets the mill rate that is used for collecting taxes during the coming fiscal year. For those that divided the appropriations by the grant list to recalculate the mill rate, by now you know that does not work. There are adjustments and abatements that taken. You then use the collection rate and come out and divide that by the amount required to be raised from taxes. Last year, the methodology was the grant list is reduced by abatements for veterans, volunteers, seniors, and other grants. That stayed the same. The actual collection rate for the last five years was then calculated and reduced by 25 basis points to allow for changes in the grant list and/or actual collection rate. The mill rate is then calculated by dividing the amount needed to be raised from taxes and adjusted by the grant list, multiplying that amount by 1,000. We've had a very good collection rating, so much so that the Board of Selectmen and Kate reduced the interest payments for unpaid taxes from $275,000 to $250,000. However, the Board of Finance decided to be a little bit conservative here and use a collection rate associated with the Great Recession, reducing the collection rate to 98.91. We would have had a collection rate of 99.44. The reduction has resulted in the assumption that the town would collect less, collect $700,000 less in taxes than originally calculated. At our special meeting on June 4th with 15 of 17 members present, the F&amp;B Committee voted unanimously to approve the revised mill rate and recommends the same to the full RTM.
All right, thank you. Any other committees or any comments? Floor?
I see none. Let's go.
Great, no vote, let's, then we'll vote, no votes, please?
I do not see any hands raised.
Abstentions?
Terry Duffy abstains. That's it? No.
Motion passes. Next item is authorizing borrowing of up to $10 million. Speaking for Finance and Budget, Jack Davis.
I move Section F of the RTM Resolution 20-15 authorizing and improving $10 million of borrowings. Is there a section?
Yes, you have a second.
If there's no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. This authorizes, this authorization is part of each annual budget. It authorizes the town to issue short-term tax anticipation notes, up to $10 million, without the need of RTM approval. This allows the town to fund the budget in the event there is a timing difference between tax collection and expenditures. Although the town has not needed to utilize this authority in recent history, it gives them the necessary flexibility. In an early conference call with First Selectman David Stevenson, the Board of Finance Chair John Zagroski, Town Administrator Kate Bush, the Director of Finance Jen Chineski, and myself, F&amp;B suggested increasing this amount from the $5 million that had been improved in prior years due to the anticipated approval of the Tax Deferral Plan, which we approved in the April meeting. There's no cost to this increase. The Director of Finance suggested the $10 million amount, and all parties agreed. The committee met on June 4th with 15 of 17 members present, and the committee voted unanimously to approve and recommend the same to the full RTM.
Any comments?
I see no hands raised.
Ready to vote? No votes, please?
There aren't any.
Motion pass, well, no.
You need abstentions, you need abstentions.
Yep, sorry, Erin.
Terry Duffy abstains.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, their appropriations, the sewer funds and parking lot. Speaking on behalf of F and B, Jack Davis.
I move section G of the RTM Resolution 20-15 authorizing and approving the appropriations of transfer of funds. Is there a second?
Yes, you have a second.
If there are no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. This item includes five different appropriations from different funds, all the appropriations of self-funding, which means the fund that collects the revenues, uses fees or taxes, automatically feeds the expenses for the services which it provides. The sewer funds excluding the sewer capital funds reimburse the town the sewer-related expenses, which was part of the Board of Selectmen budget the RTM earlier approved, totaling 351,972 for fiscal year 21. For the sense of not, for expediting, I'm not reading which the funds' transfers were, they were in the budget. At our special meeting on June 4th, F and B Committee voted unanimously to approve all the appropriations and recommend the same to the full RTM.
Comments?
I got nothing. No hands raised.
Ready to vote? No votes, please.
I do not see any.
Abstentions?
I do not see any abstentions.
Unanimous item, the motion passes. Next item is 20-16 appropriation of 30 million for refunding of certain of the town's bonds. Speaking for finance and budget, Jack Davis.
I move Resolution 20-16 appropriating $30 million to refund certain of the town outstanding bonds and authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds or amounts available in unassigned fund balance to finance such appropriation. Is there a second?
Yes, you have them.
If there's no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. We have been doing this for a number of years. If you recall, last year, it allowed the use of unassigned fund balance allowed us to refinance, to, to, I'm sorry, to early retirement of 2.1 million dollars in December, which saved 1.8 million dollars for this fiscal year and will save an additional 300,000 for fiscal '22. Bonds issued by the town from 2012 to 2020 are covered by this resolution. The total outstanding debt at the end of the fiscal year is 68.9 million. It's important to note that this resolution does not impact the requirement for the RTM to approve any new issuance of debt to fund new capital projects. And passage of this resolution rescinds any authorized but unissued portion of previous refunding authorizations. At the regular meeting of June 4th with 16 to 17 members present, the committee voted unanimously to approve this resolution and recommend the same to the full RTM.
There's no hands raised.
Okay, ready to vote? No votes, please.
I'm seeing nothing.
Abstentions?
I have Terry Duffy and Mac Patrick abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Item passes. Next, 20-17, 503,000 for sidewalk repair for F and B, Jack Davis.
I move RTM Resolution 20-17 authorizing the appropriation of 503,000 to pay for sidewalk repairing and replacement project and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of 503,000 to meet said appropriation. Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
If there's no objection, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. This resolution was approved by the Board of Finance at their May 14th meeting, approving the funding of the sidewalk project. The project was recently discussed by the Public Works Group. The cost of the project is 500,000, and the bonding includes 3,000 for issuance. Estimated annual principal and interest cost for a 10-year bond approximates 54,000 per year. The Board of Finance does expect that this project, as well as projects outlined in 20-18, to be part of a larger issue that will include additional Ox Ridge Funds. The F and B Committee met on June 4th with 16 to 17 members present and voted unanimously to approve this resolution and recommend the same to the full RTM.
Thank you. For public health and safety, Mac?
Mac, you need to unmute yourself.
Yep, Mac Patrick, Public Health and Safety Chairman. We met on June 3rd with 14 of 17 members present, and we voted unanimously to support 20-17, and also I'll speak to 20-18 as well, sidewalks in both of them, but we, we voted unanimously. Thank you.
And Public Works, Monica McNally?
We met on May 27th, as I already reported, and with 11 of 12 members present, we voted unanimously to support this.
Okay. Comments?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, ready to vote? No votes, please.
Raise your hands for the no votes. I don't see any, Seth.
Okay, abstentions?
I have Terry and Mac again.
Motion passes. Next item, 20-18, action on appropriation of 1,015,000 for various capital projects. On behalf of F and B, Jack Davis.
This is the last resolution of the evening. I move RTM Resolution 20-18 authorizing the appropriation of 1,015,000 to pay for various capital improvement projects and authorizes the issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of 1,015,000 to meet said appropriation. Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
If there's no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. This resolution was approved by the Board of Finance at their May 14th meeting. The capital projects included in this resolution are upgrading the heating control system at Town Hall for 170,000. Conversion of the Nuroten Fire Department to natural gas from a combination of oil, electric, and propane for 165,000. As we previously noted, 60,000 was already in the reserve funds, and the total project is 225,000. Construction of new tennis court at Darien High School for 525,000. Installation of approximately 300 feet of new sidewalk on West Avenue for 75,000. Replacement of windows in the north side of the gymnasium for 75,000. This is part of a larger project where 100,000 has already been budgeted, and we expect more to be done. It's an excellent project to be moving forward on. An estimated issuance cost of 4.6 thousand. Estimated annual interest and principal costs are expected to range from 108,000 to 64,000 based upon a 10-year or 20-year bond, respectively. The Board of Finance does expect these projects, as well as the 503 on sidewalks, to be part of a larger issue that includes additional funds for the Ox Ridge School. The F and B Committee met on June 4th with 16 of 17 members present and voted unanimously to approve this resolution and recommend the same to the full RTM. I would like to thank my committee for all the work that they did this budget season. Thank you.
Any others? How are we looking, Kate?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Hey, ready to vote? No votes, please.
I see none, Seth.
Okay, abstentions?
Mac and Terry abstaining.
Okay, motion passes.
One other thing before we close the meeting, I'd like to thank Cecil and Kate for their excellent work in a very difficult meeting.
Yep, it was a great job, and really, it's complex when you have this many doing virtual meetings, and they did a really great job. The next item was 20-19, but I was told by the Chair of TGSNA that it's just not ready to go. So if, if it's all right with everybody, I'll, we'll take no action tonight, and we'll put it on the agenda for September. So if that's okay.
Um, I have Clara with her hand raised.
Okay.
Can I just ask you to go, Kate, you have done a great job, but in the no vote on the education budget, at one point, I think you said Janet Grogan was a yes. So I wonder if you could check the numbers on the no vote again. I think you only had four nos and one abstention. I just, as I was taking notes, I thought maybe I'd mentioned that to you. Thanks again for your work.
Thank you. Okay, I will check on that after.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, zoom out.